I tried to do it. Yeah. In my mind, it's like for them every time.
Right, but like I've been there ever since. This is not better on those. It's a lot better.
As you have the input and stuff and all this. It's just. Actually.
Yeah.
Your team is your stadium.
Yeah.
Like going to a sea, going to a sea. There's nothing that could.
No, I'm. So.
Now I'm mediocre.
We're in the biggest.
You know me, you know me, my cookies. I got a meeting.
So you can hit it in about five.
I don't. That's it, that's.
I didn't know that was.
And I was like, you know, that sounds pretty crazy.
I know there.
I could say that.
I hate this shit. Like I was.
Artists. I wouldn't even know.
It's like. There's all these things. And by the way.
Yeah.
I would hate to be. They're asking for tax.
That's right.
The man.
Yeah. Fall asleep.
All of that.
No. But otherwise.
Nothing at all. Later.
Bye.
Do you want that?
That's not. What did they smell? We can cross. Not like.
I got my.
Well. But.
Oh. I love glitter. Was it where you really liked your wife?
Apparently we ran out of agendas, but we went and ran off some more copies. So if you did not get one and you would like one, there are more at the door. It is also available on the city website. Yes. Okay, it is six o'clock. Cassie, are we ready? Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation that it will be given by Councilman Savage, followed by, uh, we will, uh, recite the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Paul, would you lead us in that?
Our Father in Heaven, we are truly grateful we gathered together today. Grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this great city. We ask a special blessing on all those within our city that are struggling or are passing through difficulty, that we can be thy hands to lift them up and help them. Bless us to be good neighbors. We are grateful for the opportunities we have and we ask a special blessing on all of us tonight, that as we go forward, we can make decisions with a sound mind, with sound understanding, that we can be blessed with thy wisdom to know how to best serve the community. We are grateful for each of the people that are willing to to get involved, to to speak out and to 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 learn and understand the issues placed before them. We thank thee for all these things and for the moisture we've received and ask thee to continue to bless us in that abundance, and thus we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Please rise for the pledge.
I. Um, United States of America. And two great bodies for which is to hand. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to begin this evening, uh, I've asked the city manager, Brody Bavero, to make a short presentation that will hopefully address most of the commonly asked questions. I have received a lot of phone calls over the last couple of weeks. I'm happy about that. I'm glad that people reach out and you're always welcome to do that. But it does provide a pattern of things that lots of people have asked about. So we thought we'd take care of some of that to begin with and share that information. Brody.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, I am going to just lay out, uh, in detail a little bit about what we're actually here for tonight. Um, I'm sure there's been a lot of discussion. You've seen the notices that obviously that's why you're here. Uh, you may have talked to some neighbors, that sort of thing. Um, so in order to have a productive night in a public hearing, when you want to give input to the city council, we want to make sure that everybody is on the same page of what we're actually here for, that we have a common understanding of what the proposal is, um, so that, uh, we can all discuss the merits of whether to to make whatever decision the council wants to make tonight. Um, I'm going to go through this, uh, this presentation. I'll try not to bore everybody to death, um, which is no small feat when you're talking about something as entertaining as taxes. But I want to start off with something very important, and that is what the city's role is here in the community. Um, our mission is to provide quality services, uh, that are also affordable. And, uh, at the same time, we, we strive to promote community pride. Uh, when you think about the events that we put on, um, the professionalism of our, our men and women in, in uniform that's, that serve the public and police and fire, uh, the, the trained and knowledgeable people we have in, in public works that work on our roads um, and the people here i- in City Hall, um, and throughout the whole city organization, that all contributes to community pride. We also, um, work on fostering economic development, which the mayor will actually talk about a little bit after me tonight. And, uh, we also look to the future. On the city's website, you can find our general plan of what the city plans in, in the future. Uh, we, we study our infrastructure, we study the land use. Um, that's all available publicly. You can look at it on the website um, of what the city has adopted. I want to start off by mentioning also that, uh, you have access to the city's finances. We, we produce, um, our annual financial reports, our budgets. That's all available on the website for you to review. I also want to mention that, uh, for a long time now, fourteen years, the city's received the certificate of achievement and excellence for financial reporting, uh, which, uh, speaks to the dedication we have towards transparency and excellence in, in accurately reporting our finances. I do want to, um, he probably doesn't want me to put the spotlight on him, but I want to recognize Steve Marshall over here in the corner. Um, he does the heavy lifting for that. So let's get started with, uh, finances. Um, so we'll start with revenue. This is a pie chart showing all the different revenue sources that the city has for the general fund. Uh, I believe there is a way for us to do that. Thank you. So this, this pie chart shows the different revenue sources and property tax is not the, the main revenue source for, for the city. Uh, the number one revenue source for the city is actually sales tax. When you go to, you know, Maverick or Walmart or whatever, and you pay sales tax there, the vast majority of that sales tax goes to the state, but a very small portion of that does, does come to the city. Um, the second largest, um, uh, I'm trying to get this off here. The second largest piece of that pie is the charges for services. So these are fees that we charge, but only if you use that service. So think of recreation programs. If you sign, you know, your son or daughter up for Little Lee, you pay a fee. Um, if you don't sign up your, your son or daughter, you don't pay a fee. Um, building inspections, things like that. Um, those are designed to offset taxes so that you, the taxpayer, don't have to pay for your, your neighbor's inspection because, you know, he wants to do an addition to, to his house. Um, those are, those are charges that you only pay if you use that service. And then third in line is the property tax, uh, um, about twenty-two percent uh, of the revenue. Uh, ten percent of revenue comes through grants and, and contributions. The city does continually seek out grants. That's outside funding that citizens do not have to contribute to, but we do receive the benefits of that money um, and improvements to the city. And that actually reduces the tax burden. And then we have franchise tax, which is your tax on your, on your outside utilities like power and gas, things like that. You saw in the notice there was a twenty, a possible twenty point, uh, three nine percent tax increase. That's the maximum that the, the council could, uh, pass tonight. Keep in mind that that's not twenty percent of the total budget of the city. That's only twenty percent of the tax revenue from property taxes. Okay, so if you look at the whole budget, the, that amount of money is actually only about a three point seven percent increase of the city's budget. So, you know, if the concern is, oh, we're, you know, growing government and it's, it's getting out of hand, um, it's a pretty modest, uh, addition to the overall budget. Where does that money go? Well, you have to understand that a city government is largely a human to human service. You know, when you call nine one one, there's a police officer that shows up at your house. Uh, or there's a fire crew that shows up at your house. Um, or it requires a human to do the service. You have men and women who go out and work on, you know, the utilities and the roads and the mow the parks and things like that. So most of the budget goes to, to pay for those people that provide you that service, about two thirds of the budget. Uh, there are, uh, fifteen percent of, of the revenue goes towards capital expenses. These are your vehicles, your facilities, things like that. Uh, operating expenses, uh, those are your equipment, your supplies, your tools, um, to do the work. And then about four point nine percent of the money goes towards debt service on outstanding bonds the city has for, uh, some of our buildings. In order to understand tonight what, what is going on, we have to have a, a basic understanding of how property taxes work in Utah, which are actually a little bit, uh, counterintuitive um, because it doesn't work like sales tax and it doesn't work like income tax. Um, so we'll, we'll have an example here. So let's say the city receives annually five million dollars, right? Um, as an example, from property tax. And we all, you know, there's all these properties in Syracuse and every year, uh, the value of that property can go up or down. It usually goes up. So the way the taxes work though, if, if property values in the city go up, then the tax rate will automatically go down, even if the city council does nothing. That tax rate will automatically go down, so the city still receives the same amount this year as it did last year. Okay, now the reverse can happen too. If we went into like a real estate, you know, bubble burst or something and, and, and values dropped, the city council, they don't have to do anything and your tax rate will automatically go up so that the city would receive the same amount of revenue as last year. And so that's, that's different from say, income tax. So income tax, if you get, uh, you know, a raise or something, that tax rate stays the same, so you actually pay more. Um, and the state would, or the federal government would actually receive more money. So with cities though, we don't, we, we receive the same amount, um, regardless of whether the values go up or down. Okay, so, um, in addition to that, there is uh, an erosionary effect because of inflation that happens. So remember, the city receives the same amount of money year after year from existing properties. Um, as an example of that, to illustrate that, uh, let's say, you know, for every thousand dollars, um, you know, back in two thousand fourteen, when the city received a thousand dollars, it could provide a thousand dollars in services to the residents. Um, because we're receiving that same amount of money each year, fast forward ten years, we're in two thousand twenty-four. Because of inflation, we're still receiving that thousand dollars, but we can only provide five hundred and twenty-four dollars of service uh, because the purchasing power is, is reduced. So you might say, well, what about all this growth? You know, the city's growing like crazy and, uh, where's all that money? Uh, what, doesn't that pay for everything? Well, in, in, in some cases it does, uh, but you have to keep in mind that the new growth, first of all, in order to pay for everything, has to dig the in, the inflationary hole, you know, has to dig out of that inflationary hole um, so that, uh, it can provide the same thousand dollars worth of service to you and pay for itself. And so when, when you look at property taxes, the property taxes on an average home is, you know, around five hundred dollars. Uh, so you have to, you'd have to add a lot of homes to actually pay for some of these services. Um, but that's not even the, the main point. The main point is new growth, it, it's meant to cover the cost of that new growth, not to cover the cost of the existing residences that are, that are already here. So inflation is, is a factor in all of this. Um, getting into your actually, your actual, uh, property tax bill. Uh, I want to make sure everybody understands correctly because a lot of times people come in and they see the, the ad and it says a twenty percent property tax increase and they think that it's twenty percent of their entire property tax bill. You know, so if you're, if your whole combined property tax bill is say, you know, say it's three thousand dollars and you're thinking, oh, that's a twenty percent increase on, on three thousand dollars. That's six hundred bucks. That's all, that's crazy. That's not what is going on here tonight. Um, when you look at your combined property tax bill, the vast majority of about sixty percent of your property tax goes to the school district. It doesn't come to the city. Um, the, the next closest entity is the city, but it's, it's only down at like nineteen percent of your property tax bill. So I want to make sure we under, we all understand that, that the twenty percent is only on that city portion. It's not on that, the whole, you know, the whole enchilada there, so. By way of comparison, um, I want to make sure we, we understand the magnitude and, and of, of the proposed, uh, tax increase. Um, whenever we pay taxes, we kind of have this sort of visceral negative reaction, even I do, and you know, I work for the city. Um, and, uh, we feel like when we pay taxes, it just goes into like this black hole and and just kind of disappears. It comes out of our wallet and into this black hole. And yet we do, as Americans, we are really good consumers, so we do have a really good grasp at value. So when I go to the store, I'm going to pay the store money and I'm going to get something in return, right? And we do that on a day to day basis. And when we look at that in, with that same perspective of I'm going to pay these property taxes and what am I going to get? Um, you know, I think it's important to understand, uh, what we actually get in return for those taxes and does it have value? Um, but in terms of magnitude, I think it's important to understand what we're talking about tonight. So for example, the average annual cellphone bill in the United States is about eighteen hundred bucks. Um, we pay for our cellphone bill. Uh, we pay monthly, so it doesn't feel like it's that much. Um, and you know, that's an average, uh, you know, based on families and um, so yours might be more, yours might be less. Uh, the average annual cable internet bill is about twelve hundred bucks a year uh, to, to get your internet and cable. Um, a lot of people now are streaming. Um, the average annual streaming budget uh, for a household is about seven hundred and thirty-two bucks a year. Um, if the, the proposed tax increase tonight goes through, um, the average annual tax paid to the city in property tax is about six hundred bucks. Um, and what you, what do you get for that? Well, you get, uh, parks that are, that are maintained, that you can go to at any time. Uh, you get a professionally trained twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five police force. You get a twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five trained professional fire department. Uh, you get your streets maintained um, and sidewalks. And then you can get your business done here at the city uh, by administrative staff, whether it's, you know, getting a passport, getting permits or whatever questions or issues you have with the city. So, so for a third of your cellphone bill, on average, uh, you get all of that service. So I think there's a strong argument that can be made that, that it's a good value. Um, and, and, uh, and again, going back to the city's mission, we're trying to provide a quality service and maintain affordability. So getting down to, to the brass tacks of what is on the, on the table tonight, without any action by the city council, the tax rate would drop, as I, as I mentioned before, because property values have increased. Um, so if they do nothing, then the property tax rate will, will go down. Um, they have, uh, put on the table the possibility of raising that, uh, tax rate. So the only reason we have these hearings is if, if we want to set the tax rate different than what it would automatically go to. Uh, the additional revenue that would be raised by this tax increase is a little over a million, one, one million, twenty-five thousand dollars. That equates to, on the average home, about a hundred and two dollars a year or eight dollars and fifty cents a month. What's driving this tax increase? This, this graph's a little busy, so, so I'll walk through it. Um, the blue line represents the city's, uh, population since nineteen eighty. Um, it's sort of a, a fairly steep but gradual increase. Um, the red line represents the square footage of building space that the city has, has built over time. And you'll notice what, what I'm trying to get across in, in this graph is actually the shape of those two lines. One is incremental. It grows incrementally, uh, over time. The other one kind of goes in fits and starts, and that is because you don't build a building uh, incrementally. You build a building all at once. It's actually more expensive to build a building incrementally. Um, and so what you see here is in the, in the nineties, we added some public works buildings. Uh, in the early two thousands, uh, we added a community center and an expansion of public works. And then we added this building, uh, remodeled the police station and we added our fire station thirty-one down on Three Thousand West. Uh, there hasn't been any building since, uh, up until recently, uh, we added a, a park maintenance facility. And, uh, we are in the process of constructing Fire Station Thirty-two, uh, the city's second fire station. And when those happen, when those, when those big chunks happen, it takes a huge investment upfront. Um, and that's, that's difficult to digest when your tax revenue is incremental. And so a lot of times the timing is such that you have to make this huge investment um, when, when the growth hasn't caught up all the way in terms of tax revenue. So the primary drivers getting into that, uh, the city's in the process of a multi-year expansion of the fire department. Uh, as I said, Station Thirty-two is under construction. It does not help to serve the community if there's no people in that fire station. So in addition to building a fire station, you have to actually staff it um, in order to get the response times needed under national, uh, fire protection standards. And, um, so that's what we, uh, have been planning to do. Last year, we, we did add eight positions to the fire department. Uh, we did not hire them until halfway through the year, so it essentially cost us half of the full amount of those eight. But it's important to note that the full cost of those eight landed this year because we got to pay those employees for a full year this year. So that's added to the budget versus last year. The Station Thirty-two construction, it required, as I said, it's a huge investment upfront, eleven point six million dollars to build that building. Um, the, the annual bond payments on it are close to a million dollars for that. Um, and then, uh, in addition to those eight that we've already hired, the proposal this year is to hire four additional uh, uh, firefighter positions, um, battalion chief and three captains, so that So that the three staff, or the three crews have supervisory staff um, to work with. Uh, keep in mind too, that fire departments are expensive, they are different. Um, mainly because uh, it's a twenty-four-seven operation. You have people on, on the clock, twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days, holidays, weekends, the whole time. And um, and you know, in addition to that, it's, it's a, you have to hire them in groups of people. So you know, if you call nine-one-one and need a police officer, a lot of time, you might have one police officer show up, maybe two. Uh, when you call nine-one-one for a medical or a fire, you have a whole crew of firefighters show up. And so they, they come en masse for a reason and you have to hire that way. You have to hire them on as, as groups of people instead of just one person. So you have to, you have to do it in large chunks. So even after doing that this year, uh, we still need to fully staff that station, we still need nine more positions. Um, that's not in the budget. Uh, we are seeking a safe, it's called a safer grant from the federal government. Um, to help pay for those other nine. If we do not get that grant, they will not be hired this year. Um, and we'll have to just figure out in later years how to, how to get those.
Okay, this is not a Q and A. Uh, let's let him get through his presentation, please.
Yeah, so, so in addition to the fire station, um, there are. Um, as you, as you probably saw in the notice, there are other new positions coming online. Um, there's an assistant city manager, police lieutenant, a recreation.
No, not at this time. There's, this is not a question and answer period. Let's let him finish. He has the floor.
So, so, and I, I will add, and maybe, maybe I should have said that at the beginning. The way this, the night will proceed is there will be presentation of information. Uh, the, the mayor and council will open up a public hearing for the, the public to speak to the council. Um, and then the council will have a period of discussion. Um, where they, they can discuss the issues. A lot of times, you know, they'll, they'll discuss the issues that are presented in the, in the public comment period. Um, and they'll weigh, you know, the benefits and drawbacks of, of taking the vote or not. So. Um, and I apologize, I should have mentioned that upfront. Uh, it is a public hearing. Um, that's the way it's advertised, uh, but I did fail to mention that. Um, so these other positions, the reason why, so that's the priority direction of this additional revenue to fund all of these positions. But the fire department is a primary driver because even if you weren't hiring any of these other positions. You would still need to do a tax increase to cover the fire department piece. If the fire department piece was not happening, you could cover those other positions just in the natural growth of the city without a tax increase. And so. So that's the primary driver, but in full transparency, there are other, you know, positions being added. They're more incremental as the city grows. There's usually, usually each year we hire one in this department, one in that department, so forth and so on. Okay, so what are, are the benefits of that extra property tax increase? Uh, the first one is improved emergency response time. Uh, as the city has, has grown, um, it's been increasingly difficult to uh, to maintain national standards on response times. Um, it is a decision of the community and their elected officials to decide uh, what are acceptable response times. Um, and there are standards set up to, to define what is a generally accepted uh, response time and. Uh, the new fire station will provide that additional uh, access to the eastern side of the city. Um, in order to get those response times to be within that standard. Um, our fire department does, uh, it doesn't just respond to fire calls. Uh, we have firefighter paramedics. In fact, most of our calls are medical. I think about two-thirds of our calls are actually medical. They're not fire-related. Uh, enhanced internal auditing, disaster preparedness and overall performance of city services. Uh, this is in terms of the fire battalion chief, uh, police lieutenant, assistant city manager. Anyone who has operated or been involved with an organization of this size, we have about. Um, a little over two hundred uh, employees uh, or larger knows that if you don't have uh, adequate supervision and management. Um, your, your community or your uh, organization tends to uh, suffer from. Uh, you know, longer response times, lack of access and, and improve uh, service to customers. Um, disengaged employees, uh, things like that. So you have to, you have to make sure you scale that uh, with your city. Um, nobody likes a slow government, uh, nobody likes uh, fraud, waste and abuse. Um, and these positions are meant to address both of those, to prevent both of those. Uh, expanded recreational opportunities, there, as you saw, there's a proposal for a recreation coordinator. Some of that position can be offset through recreational fees, uh, so we did account for that, but some of it wouldn't. And um, that position, you know, we do have a lot of children in our community. Uh, we also have a lot of adults that would like to have recreation programming. Um, this would expand our offerings to allow more of those outlets for, for uh, both children and adults. Uh, and finally, uh, added pedestrian safety for school children. There is a new school being built that's actually in West Point, barely across the border on the north end. But the children uh, that are going to that school, a lot of them are Syracuse residents. And will be crossing over into that school, and so we will have to hire some of the crossing guards uh, for those crossings for our children. So in terms of, you know, looking at it in terms of a consumer, what are, what are we getting for this extra added tax? If, you know, this is the value, this is, if this, if these things are valuable to you, then uh, that's what has to be weighed tonight. There's a lot of questions on, well, why doesn't the city just cut elsewhere to fund these positions or, you know, trim down and that sort of thing? And we have, that we agree, that's what you have to do in these, in these uh, tight budget situations. Um, this is a list of fifteen things that we went through from the original proposed budget and we, and we worked together with the council and we cut them out. Uh, these, you know, there were uh, several positions that were requested that we're not funding. We believe those are positions we need to operate adequately, um, but we're just gonna go without. Um, some of these are big, some of these are small, um, some, you know, improvements to some of our buildings, not gonna happen. Um, uh, delays of some of our capital purchases of our vehicles. Um, a lot of, mo- uh, most years, we transfer money from our general fund to our road fund. To help pay for, for road paving, not gonna happen. Uh, we do have some money. Uh, from the gas tax, the state gas tax to help pave our roads, but we usually have to supplement it with our own money. Uh, not gonna happen. So, so the city's cut back about one point six million dollars out of the originally proposed budget. So. Uh, I think this council's taken it very seriously, um, that it needs to be very frugal. And, and, and try to reduce this as much as possible. In addition to that, in order to reduce the tax burden, as I said before, the city reaches out and gets a lot of outside funding. We've had over thirty-five million dollars come into the city of non-tax money to help pay for improvements uh, for our citizens. Uh, over the last five years. We have economic development and business assistance. Um, the mayor will, will talk a little bit about that next, but um, I think it should be noted during COVID. The city did receive uh, ARPA money from federal government. A lot of communities put that into their own facilities. Um, Syracuse City put hundreds of thousands of it into local businesses to, to keep them going through the pandemic during the shutdown. So we returned a lot of that money back to the community and um, to try to keep the businesses in, in uh, Syracuse viable. And then also future land use planning does have a role in this. Um, uh, as I said before, there, there is a general plan uh, that the city's adopted. It, it lays out, you know, what's the best place for commercial, what's the best place for residential? Um, but all those things have a financial component uh, tied to them. Okay, next question that we get a lot is, why are our taxes so high? And, and I think they do feel high. Um, but when we look, so let's look at it. In Davis County, these, this, and I'm sorry, this is a little small. I can't, I don't, I don't think I can actually, oh, maybe I can. I'll try to expand it a little bit there. Uh, this, this chart is a list of all the cities in Davis County. Um, on the left is the city. The blue bar is the city tax rate. Okay, and uh, what's important here is also the green bar. The green bar are commu- are cities that actually have a dedicated service district for fire or recreation. So Syracuse City provides its own fire department. But other communities, so for example, if you look at the chart, Clearfield, Sunset and West Point, they don't have fire departments. Their citizens pay another tax to the North Davis Fire District to pay for their fire department. So. When you look at it in terms of what the citizen pays, they actually pay a higher tax rate. Even though their city tax rate might be lower, their residents are actually paying more money for the same service. So. Um, the red on this is the proposed tax increase of all those entities. And the black is the proposed tax increase of those special service districts. So for, for those, the fire districts and so forth. So Syracuse ends up being about in the middle in terms of total tax rate uh, on properties. And that, and that will probably, you know, depending on where these, these tax increases end up, will probably end up being somewhere in the middle. Okay, I'm gonna end here with a few slides on going back to the beginning, which is, what's the goal here? We're trying to provide quality services and ma- and keeping it affordable. The city, in terms of quality service, uh, the city continues to receive accolades from outside entities. Um, rating the city as, you know, best places to live, safest cities in Utah. Um, uh, we get uh, you know, all these ratings that we have from different entities consistently. And this just shows, it's just a good place to live. I mean, it really is a good, a good community to live, to raise families. Um, we, we do have it pretty good here in Syracuse in terms of quality of life. And we think the city has some role in that. I think we're a partner in that. You know, we can't, we can't claim that it's all because of the city government, but, but we play a role in that. Um, in terms of affordability, the Utah Taxpayers Association uh, released a, a cost of government report. Uh, this is a, an organization that is the watchdog for all taxpayers in the state of Utah. So they look out for the taxpayer dollar and their report shows that uh, Syracuse City is the eighth lowest cost of city government uh, in the state. Um, based on their study of the, the largest fifty cities in Utah, which we were in that group. Um, so for example, the uh, in this, in this metric, the average cost per person of city government. Is eight hundred and five dollars per person, per year. Uh, in Syracuse City, it's five hundred and ninety-nine. So, so we are the eighth lowest in the, in that group. In terms of comparing that uh, with the affluence of the community, so they, they looked at it in two ways. One was just per capita. And then the other one was based on quote-unquote ability to pay. Um, so this is how much your city government costs per thousand dollars of income. So the average throughout the state is about twenty-five bucks. For every thousand dollars of income that a citizen makes, their city costs them about twenty-five bucks on average. Uh, for Syracuse City, it's about sixteen bucks. Um, so it's the seventh lowest in the state. So in terms of affordability. Um, and quality service, I think, I think a strong argument could be made that Syracuse City, despite a proposed tax increase, which, you know, may or may not go through tonight. Um, is a relatively low-cost government and uh, and is pretty good value. Um, so I wanna, I wanna leave it there. Uh, I'm, I've probably taken too much time, but I just wanted to make sure. We all have an understanding of where we are and what's on the table before we, we get into, you know, your comments and the deliberation on the council. Um, so I'll turn the time over to the mayor. Mayor will speak a little bit just on a, a vision going forward. Um, so he's got a, a few slides on that.
Okay, thank you, Brody. And I think that was important for us to establish some of that information. Um, I will say that I've received an awful lot of phone calls. Uh, my phone has been extremely busy the last few weeks and that's great. I appreciate hearing from you. I understand that there are a lot of challenges out there. This is the wrong one. Okay, that is the wrong. Well, I, I am, but it, it, it was edited information. Sorry, that was a. Do you not have the current? Okay.
Can you present it with dance?
You know, all right, so I'm gonna go through this just as I remembered. I apologize for uh, not having the correct information here. Uh, we did just edit this a couple hours ago. So my plan would be that I would like not to see a tax increase next year. Uh, I would like not to have seen a tax increase this year, but things happen and we have to debate it. And it's not my opinion alone. It is. The opinion of the six people up here, five of which get to vote on it. So the point is that. We have to decide how we're going to agree on things. There are four things that I brought out to, that I've been pushing for the last couple of years or have brought out recently to try and reduce. Our need for increased taxes. And I'm gonna go through each of those that's not new to the council. These have been presented in, in past meetings. The first one is we have to increase our effort to build up the business in the city. It has been something we've put a lot of active attention into and I put a lot of personal time into because, as Brody pointed out. The businesses don't just bring property tax, which comes about a year after things open. It also brings sales tax. Sales tax happens immediately. Now, while we're only a portion of that sales tax, that is the most immediate impact that we can have on our budget. And that's why we've pushed so hard to develop business. And we are kind of, where we have had a lot of small businesses come in the last two years, and we have. It's been wonderful. The bigger businesses have taken a little bit longer and we are just on the cusp of that. And we believe that it will happen soon, which will divert some of this uh, issue. The second thing is, and I've been pushing this for years and years, we have to be aggressive to go out and find grants. Uh, Brody showed that we had about thirty-five million over the last few years in grants. Actually, if I reached out to our department heads and we pick up through smaller grants that weren't attributed citywide just for departments, things like. For bulletproof vests, we receive grants for uh, fire equipment, for EMS. Uh, that pushes us over thirty-five million in grants that we have received in the last couple of years. Which is wonderful because that's all tax dollars that you don't pay. So that's very important to the plan to keep taxes low. But I am concerned because I go to a lot of these meetings with uh, state boards representing us trying to get things. And I see that some of our neighbors like Leighton gets about three times the grant money that we do. Well, one of the reasons is they have a lot of dedicated staff to do that and we don't have that and I'm not suggesting that we're gonna get it. Because that is uh, you know, that's difficult for a city our size to support. But we have to be more aggressive and that means that we've got to take on some of that as uh, representatives. Go out and find things and help uh, bring the opportunities here. The third thing, and this is really important, is uh, we have got to not be the fastest-growing city in Davis County. Seven of the last eight years, and I presented this in the meeting two months ago. Seven of the last eight years, we have been the fastest-growing city in Davis County and not by a little. Now, we're not the biggest city, but when we grow at that rate, instead of at a rate that is more accustomed to our position in the county. If we were to be the third or second, or eve- you know, even the second fastest-growing city. We would be in a better position to absorb all the needed services that come with growing population. So we do have to, uh, we cannot be the fastest-growing city and not expect to have that come forward. As Brody pointed out. In property tax, that comes about a year after people move in. Because the assessed value doesn't come until the next tax season. So we've got to do. So we've got to do that. We've got to cut back on that. That means that we've got to, we have to be careful how we, uh, approve plans, not because there's any bad plan per se, but because we have to have a pace that we can sustain. So this is important. I presented two months ago that we have a backlog. We have 888 at that time, 888, uh, new units already pre-approved that can be built at any time. And then the next meeting, we approved another 117. So now we're over a thousand units of backlog. That's too fast for us. Um, the average growth in the county is only about 200 residential units. And, um, we have been averaging 400 to 500 a year. That's twice the average rate. And I have all these stats that I pulled not from our resources, but that I showed the council, and so that's out there. And the fourth and final one is we have got to do better at understanding where we're going to get more funds and eliminate some of the growth needs. When we're primarily a service organization, you have to be aware that a lot of your costs come from people. And so I've been asking and pushing since about February, when I attended a meeting here in Davis County, uh, where we were presented with the future of AI and robotics. And, uh, they estimate, and I don't actually believe this, but they estimated at this conference that by 2026, 80% of the jobs in the US could be done through either AI or robotics. I don't know if that's actually true, and I don't ever expect the city to be 80%. That's a really high number. What if we were just 10%? What if we could just cut out 10% of the duties? I'm not talking about cutting people, talking about cutting out some of the duties to free up the new things that we need to have done or the new people, so that we don't have to hire continually. For example, uh, there are cities out there that cut their parks with a fleet of robot mowers. Means one person can operate several vehicles instead of one person per vehicle. Right now, we roll out on a park and we've got a minimum two people, if not four. So if we could deploy something like that, these mowers don't cost more than the other mowers, but it does take a little bit of an investment. Another one is what about all the paperwork that could be done through artificial intelligence? If we were able to get some of that done, it saves us hiring more people. So these are just a few of the ideas that I've put out there. Um, my goal is not to have another tax increase, regardless of where we land tonight. So I'm asking that we, as council, be more aggressive in looking at ways that we can reduce our need to increase debt. So, uh, there is debt. One of our biggest challenges, and I'll put this out there too, one of our biggest challenges is we have debt that we have no choice. We start the year with debt, and these, these are not to blame any particular person, because this goes back four or five, uh, councils or mayors ago. But when you add buildings, I'm paying for that building for another 10, 20 years. So is it necessary? Yeah, we have to do those things, and we spread it out over time. That's great, but we start the year already behind that. And so we've got to be conscious of where we start and how much we add to anything, whether it's debt, compensation for employees, whether it's, uh, new services because of the growth of the city. We just have to be really careful. Everything matters. So that's what I have to say on the subject. Now we're going to open a public hearing. At this point in time, what we're going to do is anyone can come up and give, we're going to limit it to three minutes, because we have a lot of people and I want everyone to have an opportunity. You can bring forward your opinion. You can, uh, address us with your thoughts. It is not a Q and A. Um, we have tried to provide as much as we can, and after this, uh, the council will be able to address any of the questions that you ask, but this is not a Q and A. Uh, this is going to be, uh, you come up, make your statement, leave your questions, and they will be able to address anything that you, uh, that they would choose to address. Okay, so, uh, please feel free to come up. It's one at a time. You know, we'll go until everyone has had a chance that wants one. I, I do also need you to state your name for the record and where you live. That's a public records requirement.
My name is Brad Shepard, and I'm a Syracuse resident. And I had some prepared remarks, but after seeing the presentation, I feel like we've been gaslit a little bit. I'd like to correct a few of the, uh, things. The inflation impact, for example, where we're told that $1,000 in 2014 is only worth 524 now. That is not accurate, according at least to the inflation tables that I've been looking at. That's almost 100%, and it would be really more like around 30. We were told repeatedly that this increase is modest. And yet a 20% tax increase to indicate some more planning because the things that are required out of that 20%. For example, building a fire station. It seems like we should bring out how we were going to pay for the people before we built the fire station. Now, I'm not opposed to taxes just for the sake of opposition, but an increase of over 20% is really kind of high. I do not expect a raise anytime soon since I'm retired. So the 20% is going to have to come out of some of my other activities in order to pay for that. And one last thing here on that table that we saw of all the different cities, it looked more like the blue one on there, which was the most important line, was the farthest to the right is someone that was owned by Syracuse, which indicates that we pay the highest property taxes in this county. Now, I have not seen, you know, through the ones that I've wrote down in Syracuse, I have not seen a decrease in my taxes. I've seen an increase. So I'm not sure why that is, if I'm supposed to see it decrease because of inflation. Thank you for your time.
Take off my hat. Lady Millgate, I live at 788 South, 1825 West, near Syracuse High School. And to go along with what the gentleman just got done saying, in 2021, my property taxes were $464. This is for the city. $464.58. They went in 2022 to $638.19, which is 33% increase. In '23, they dropped. They went down to $625, which was a decrease of 1.9%. I was happy last year. But now we're going to go up this year to $762.43, a 20.3% increase as proposed. Now, if I take 762 and take 416 away from it, that's an increase over the last three years of $346, my property. And if I divide 416 into 346, that's an 83% increase in property taxes for the city over three-year period. 83%, council. Now, in addition to that, I'm retired. I'm on fixed income. Over those same three years, I had a 3% increase, a 5% increase, and a 3% increase in my retirement. 11% compared to 83%. Something's wrong with that picture. Something is wrong with that picture. What is wrong with that picture? Well, I did a little more looking into it. Maybe some of the problem is this. I looked at Syracuse in Rome. Our chief of police makes, and this is '23, 2023, our chief of police makes $248,000. Our city manager is $229,000. Our minister, Minister for Services makes $205,000.
Okay, sir, I, you're out of time. I, I, you're out of time.
Okay.
I, I hate to cut you off there, but this will be something that we will address later.
Yeah, but just a little bit more, and I'll tell you why.
I have to be fair with everybody, which means that you're timed. Okay. That's not the way it works.
Anyway, the city manager makes $164.
Sir, you're out of time.
Okay. So maybe we need to cut wages a little, and you say we want business. You keep having multiple...
Sir, you're out of time. Order. Order, if you would like this to continue, we have to maintain order. This is not a pep rally. This is a hearing, which means we have to be fair. And that means that where there's not a cheering opportunity. I'm sorry, but that is the rules of order according to the city.
I appreciate the ovation as I stood up.
I am, yes, and welcome that.
My name is Mina Page. I live at 621 West, 1950 South. Um, that was a great presentation. It made us all, uh, believe that we should be happy about a tax increase and that we should, uh, accept it. And, uh, it's just not something that I think I'm going to do. So it is a 20% increase. I just have to say, are you kidding me? That is ridiculous. I'd like to know how many residents received a 20% increase in their salaries over the past year. Um, I don't think anyone did. So have any received a 10% raise? I don't think so. Um, there probably are. Um, but we've already felt the effects of this inflation-ridden economy, thanks to our wonderful President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris. So now we want to increase our taxes even more. We can do better than 20%. Um, it seems like we weren't even trying. I think we need to sharpen our pencils and figure out how to make, to make it work without further, further burdening our citizens. Um, sometimes you have to say no to programs or positions that you want to increase until you have the money to afford it. Something I had to learn, uh, as a child. A common line I hear in these presentations is that it's only a small amount per year, but that never goes away. It compounds every single time you do a tax increase, and it just keeps adding and adding and adding. Another one is our costs are going up, so therefore taxes also have to increase. Well, our property values have been skyrocketing, which means that the amount we're paying is already increasing accordingly. So an increase from the city again just compounds on that increase that we already received due to our increased property value. In 2014, the average property value was $265,000. If we looked at the current tax rate on those property values, it means you would have paid $240 on taxes. In 2024, on, based on your numbers of 554, 554,000 for an average home, that means our tax will be 503, which is 110% increase in the taxes that we would have paid over 10 years. But you want to increase it to $605, which will be a 152% increase since 2014. That's ridiculous. The problem with raising taxes is that you never lower them. So it just becomes permanent and it keeps growing. There's many evils with property taxes. It takes away our, our right to own property, because if we don't pay it, we lose our property. The number one thing is we're being taxed on value for property that we didn't get cash for. So it's a burden to the citizens to ask them to pay taxes. It's fake money. It, you don't realize that money until you sell. So you're asking people who are retired, who have no sources of income, to increase their money that they have to pay with the government. So I just think we need to be a little more judicious on how we do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Folks, if that continues, we will end up ending the hearing. This is just not a time for applause.
Uh, Tony North, citizen of Syracuse City. Um, I do have to admit, I have not looked in the last few years, but throughout the whole presentation, and even you yourself said that, uh, most of the money goes to personnel. I have not seen any, uh, indication of trying to fill some of that personnel with volunteer positions. I know there is the CERT program, as well as the Davis County Citizens Academy that can help fill in in certain key areas within the fire department and police department, but it doesn't seem like you guys have even touched that resource whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Colette Danzy. I live at 1331 West, 2850 South. Um, I think everybody here has touched on everything that I would have said. The other thing that I want to point out is I do have young children that have young families, and with the inflation, have had a hard time even paying for groceries for their young kids. Because of the inflation, the groceries have gone up, utility bills are going up, and also your gas, your Dominion gas. There's a proposed tax increase or increase for your utilities this year. I think that amongst our property taxes and everything else. And also, you mentioned earlier the pay raises that the city people get, but we don't get. Um, I think we need to look at things like that when we're proposing a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Russell. I live at 1087 St. Andrews Drive. I really do appreciate the time that the city manager took to make the presentation. I felt like some good things were said. I feel like our city has grown, and we do need to have some of the services. I've used the services, had an emergency little one at home. So I do appreciate having the fire department and emergency services available to us. That said, um, I'm a member's person, and I looked at the tax increases over, um, the last eight years that I had on record. On average, this is the tax rate, not the property value. So there's two variables, right? And the city manager touched on that. But looking at only the tax rate, on average, it has increased 1.5% per year over the last 10 or eight years. This increase, if you take out the property value increase, it's a 14% increase. That's 10 times more than the average. I don't think our city has grown that fast. So I think that a tax increase of reasonable value is justified to meet the growing city and the needs that we have. But I feel like the proposed tax increase is exceedingly high for the tax rate. Um, I do appreciate that you looked to tighten your belt. We've all had to do that. I think perhaps there's some creative ways that you could continue, continue considering to do so. Thank you very much.
Uh, my name is Laura Stevens. I live at 1170 West, 2275 South, Syracuse. Um, in all due respect, conferring cell phone and cable bills isn't a very valid reason for raising our taxes. It's hard for me to have you honestly look at all of our faces, um, in this community with all your bloated salaries and saying, just cut your cell phone or your cable bills, especially to our seniors who are retired and, um, will not be gaining any salary increase. Um, I must have been my math wrong incorrectly, because I had a 154% increase since 2014. Regardless, we need roads and we need water to support, to support all of these businesses that you are so aggressively trying to bring in, which is exactly the opposite of what this community wants. Um, instead, in one of your letters, you said, um, lowering taxes was going to be in the future when all this began ramping up. Instead, it was falsely presented to the citizens that business growth and high-density housing would, um, avoid raising taxes, yet there has not been, yet there has been several tax increases since then. Why couldn't we hold building permits, giving the city time to properly create a feasible budget? Thank you.
Hello, my name is uh James Broome. I live here in Syracuse at twelve fifty-five West uh one nine five zero South. Moved here about four years ago. Uh, with my wife and three kids. Now we're gonna have five. Uh, when we moved here, we moved here because those farms, we had horses, we had everything here and then the farms went away and we brought in all these apartments. And you say businesses where? What businesses? I heard Costco is coming in, but it's yet to see any ground for Costco. I've yet to see any any businesses that you guys keep saying we're gonna bring in. We're not bringing in business. Bringing in apartments. I have apartments by my house, I have apartments over the side, apartments by the high school, apartments going behind our house. And I'm wondering, you keep saying that we don't like the the city growing so quick and why do we keep bringing in more apartments? So I want to understand that. And then the whole Costco idea. Costco is supposed to come in and help us with our taxes, help us lower stuff. No Costco, no nothing. All the plans for big businesses that you guys had for ideas to come in aren't coming in. I don't see anything but apartments. They're everywhere in Syracuse. So you're actually saying that you're trying to actually grow and actually be a better city and have everything that amenities for people who live here? No, you don't. You want more apartments. That's all I see. So I'm just wondering, like, when it comes to these taxes that are increasing on my house, why? I saw the the little script that you had up there that says, oh, this is where all the money is gonna go. You know, you guys have your cell phone bills, you guys have your cable bills. I've cut all those. Just so I can feed my kids. But you guys want to raise stuff. Twenty percent for what? We want to have more firefighters? Okay, I agree. Why didn't we plan for it? Why did we build a fire station but no people to go with it? How about we cut some other people's funding and pay for firefighters? I'm okay with that. Then you're gonna say, well, what about you? What will you give up? I give up a lot for this city. And I do a lot. I volunteer Syracuse Academy. When I actually go over to Syracuse Arts Academy, we volunteer our free time to actually be crossguards. Well, we gotta pay for people? We can't have volunteers from the school or somebody come over to help out? Like, the city says it's supposed to work together. Why aren't we working together? If you guys are gonna have those plans, that's great. I understand it, but you're gonna raise my taxes for it. And yes, you're right, my house prices have gone up, but I'm not gonna get that money. I won't save that money for thirty years because I plan to be here with my family and pass it on, but you're gonna keep taxing me every year for it. I don't understand that. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Brown. I'm at two three eight seven West seventeen fifty South, behind Jordan. Um, how I just have a couple of things to say. You said that we're the fastest-growing city and that's not good be because of, you know, all these extra expenses. Why did you guys allow that to happen without putting the stuff in place for it to happen? Um, have the money in place and with I know the new fire station is taking, I talked to the city guy, the planning guy today, and he said just as you guys said here tonight, that the Fire Department is taking up most of this, what the tax increase will be for. So my question is, why didn't you budget that first? Why? Like, I can't say in my house, well, you know, I'd like a new, I'd like to build on my house or do something and just build it. I have to budget for it and plan for it. Why? Why do you guys not budget for it first? Instead, I say we're just gonna keep upping the taxes. We have no say-so in it, it seems like. I was here two years ago. You had a thirty-three percent tax increase two years ago. Everyone that came up here and talked to you guys, including myself, were not for that, for all the various reasons. But you took the vote right away and you passed it anyway. And we had a thirty-three percent tax increase two years in a row. And like they said last year, it was a little bit less now and another twenty-point-something percent tax increase. And then my last um comment would be with all this new building coming in, we're a retired military family. We've lived a lot of places. We've owned a lot of houses and hopefully we're hoping this might be our last house where we could stay here. But we're working right now, so we can afford, we don't want to afford these, but we will pay these tax increases. When we're retired, you are limited. And two years ago, when we were here, we the a lot of senior citizens were up here in their eighties saying they could not even afford groceries if you increase the taxes, but you guys did it anyway, as long as well as young families. Well, with this new, the other places that we've lived across the country, if they're gonna put in a new housing development, they that those builders incur the cost for the new fire station, the widening of the roads, the new school, the new parks. Why don't we do that here? Why do the people that we already have that in our neighborhood? Why do we have to incur the cost because you want to build new apartments or neighborhoods or whatever? So that's all I have to say.
Hello, guys. Uh, my name is Corey Martinez. Uh, I just live west on Doral Drive. Um, uh, everybody's already addressed it is now about the growing population increases with your chart and graph you showed. It looks like we're just jumping way over that line. Um, and hearing that we're the fastest-growing is kind of it's kind of freaky. I've lived here for about nine years now. When I first moved here, it was really small. And now it's just tremendous. Um. I guess, I don't know if you guys have a plan to make that slow down a little bit because it's getting a little crazy out there. Um, and then you got people can't buy groceries, like everybody's saying, buying gas. Now, uh, Dominion Energy has even just sold their company to a Canadian-based company. They say they're not gonna increase their taxes, but we all know that's coming. So we're gonna get that jump plus this and whatever else is coming. It's a lot for people to to pay. So, you know, just keep that in mind and uh we'll go forward with that. Thank you.
My name is Jasmine Martinez and I live at twenty-eight fifty-nine West twenty-four thirty-five South. And a lot of people have touched on a lot of things that concern me. I've lived here five years and since then, this has the city has grown like tremendously. A lot of things that drew us here aren't here anymore. But my question more is to all of you guys, if you guys did not have the position and the job that you guys have, do you guys think you guys could afford all these increases? It seems like the city council is very ambitious and all they want is just growth, growth and growth without actually taking the accountability of the community. Like, you guys are supposed to be working for the community and for what the people want, but it seems like you guys have your own agenda. And it almost feels like you guys hold these meetings and it's like you guys already have your mind met like made up. So it's like almost a facade that you guys have us come, have us speak on something when you guys already have a decision in mind. Because you guys don't take into account what the people want. I've seen on social media direct questions to you mayor where they said, are you trying to turn Syracuse into the next Ogden? Like, you have been asked multiple times to stop the growth, but it seems like you guys just continuously push for more growth. Costco coming here in the location that it was wanting to be presented, it seems like you guys didn't take into considerations the schools around it and the poor crosswalks that you guys have or anything like that to make the kids safe. You guys talk about safety when it comes to getting a crosswalk, um, people that help the kids and stuff like that. But you guys are trying to put big businesses next to schools that don't already have that stuff implemented when it comes to it. So like, at the end of the day, the question you guys have to ask is like, really, who are you guys working for? Because it just seems like you guys are working for your own agenda and you guys aren't taking us into consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Sutton, thirty fifty-nine South, twelve sixty-five West. Thank you all for the time tonight and I want to express my appreciation for our police force, our Fire Department and everyone who works hard to keep Syracuse safe. I fully acknowledge our need for those services. I have used them myself on a number of occasions. Um, whether for something minor or something serious. Everyone else has said most of what needs to be said, but one comment uh that I heard was that we have quality of life here in Syracuse. In the ten years that I have been here, I have seen the quality of my life decrease tremendously. I've been to a number of these city council meetings. I have spoken. I feel like I have wasted my breath at every single one. There are some of you here who spoke passionately in twenty nineteen sitting on the city council now against additional housing and then turned around and voted for it. We used to have a beautiful nature park at Johnson. It is now being torn up. It has been changed. The birds that used to be there are no longer there. We've got kayaks. We've got a lot of money being spent in different places. I don't know if that comes from grants or if that comes from our local money. But we have lost a tremendous quality of life here in Syracuse and to me it's very sad. And with taxes going up, I would expect it to improve. It has not. So I echo what others have said before me. I do appreciate the position that you're in. I know you all are trying to figure out how to pay for the sins of the councils that came before you. I know this problem was not created by most of you up here, but that it has been many, many years in the making. I appreciate that effort and I hope you will consider what everyone else has had to say tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Chad Barton, forty-three twelve West Antelope. Um, I'd like to take a different tack on things. Rather than the tax increase, I'd like to have a tax decrease. I've been here for forty-four years. We first moved in over by the Smiths on Antelope uh forty-four years ago. Uh, we're in the place that we're at now for twenty-four years. The only service that I've ever received that I'm aware of from the city of Syracuse is my snow removal. That's it. I pay for my water. I pay for my sewer. I pay for all the other items. The only thing I can think of is snow removal. I haven't seen a house fire down by where I live. Um, the whole time I've been there. Uh, I don't know why we need to be paying for so many uh firefighters. I grew up in Leighton. Every Thursday at seven o'clock, the siren would go off. All the volunteer fire uh people would uh go to the Fire Department uh for their training and so forth. Uh, there were a few uh like the Fire Chief and so forth that were paid for, but the vast majority, it was a volunteer. Have you ever thought of that? Uh, mixing volunteer fire people with the ones that we have hired. I felt really insulted when he was talking about cable and phones. I I make a choice on whether I want those. They're not imposed upon me. This is imposed upon me. I I, like I said, I felt really uh insulted by that particular uh example. I feel that with everyone moving in, everyone's paying more in property. You you have a lot more revenue and property taxes. When we first moved in, there was RC Willys and there were Smiths. And that was, those were the only businesses that were in current Syracuse. You couldn't, there were no restaurants that I can remember. Uh, so you're getting a lot more revenue in, you're getting much more property tax from everyone that's moving in. I I I just don't get it. Um. It it. I don't do stupid and this just seems like stupid. Um. I I personally would like to know the council member that proposed, because I know you have to propose a budget. I'd like to know the council member uh, Dave, when you do your presentation after, that proposed this increase. Because I would like to see that council member lose their position this next election.
Hi, my name's Debbie Woodrow and I live at twenty-eight seventy-six South one thousand West. I have lived in Syracuse my whole life and I'd like to tell you that that's twenty years, but it's not sixty years. And I've lived here since there were just no sidewalks on the street, just ditches. But I just have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I would just like to know how much um of a tax base we're getting from the high-density um housing units, the apartments. And then I work for a small business that is in Syracuse. Um, you get some taxes from us. Um. I'm just, I know that there was some federal funding for fire stations and we've worked on several of them. There's new fire stations going up all through Utah and remodels being done. I would like to know what study was done, just so we know if we need two fire stations. I know where the new fire station is going. I know that other cities will be using that fire station. Are we getting some funding from them just because it's located where it's located? Um. When these big tax or these new, when these new businesses are coming in, even if they're larger, are we giving them tax breaks for a few years? What what are we doing to lure them in? I mean, is that hurting us? That's what I'm wanting to know. You talked about our sports programs and things helping us. Why did we let our football program go? Why did we let that other thing take it over? Why aren't we keeping it? Um. I'm I don't know whether I'm even making any sense, but um. Oh, and then I hate to even say this to you guys, but it doesn't take much to drive past the City Rec Center on Saturday and see a whole brand-new fleet of city trucks. I work for a small company. We would love to have our new trucks. There's no way we could afford it. I can even see doing a little bit at a time, but we have new vehicles. They are all brand-new. Um, my family live close. Two of them are in Syracuse. I worry about their little families. I want them to be able to have the things they need to take care of their families and not be paying taxes. Three of my children cannot move to Syracuse, even though their grandparents are founders of Syracuse because they cannot afford to live here with the tax increases and things that are here. So I just encourage you to think about that. Thanks.
Good evening. Henry Marcinowski, nine eighty-three South, thirty ninety West. Um, thankful for the opportunity to speak. Um, I'd just like to say it's a little disappointing that this meeting tonight, where such an important decision will be made that will affect a lot of us here, was made on an um a school night, right? It's open house for school. And so you can pass by the elementary school or the middle school that's just up the street here and you see plenty of cars and parents and kids, right? And so we have this small group of Syracuse residents representing supposedly uh thousands of us here. I wish the council had considered that and maybe you did. Um, I believe that more citizens of our our city would be here uh to voice their opinion. I would ask the council to um consider delaying a vote tonight, not only to consider the comments made here, but possibly extend the comment period available to the citizens. Um, I will tell you that I was, I caught a notice on the bottom of my water bill. Um, that said, hey, tonight there's a meeting and so that's what brings me here today. Uh, but if you would consider that, maybe extending the comment period, the public comment period to allow more citizens to to do that. Uh, I moved here five years ago. Uh, it was a beautiful city. Uh, it's disappointing to see so much land go to high-density housing. I will echo what was said. Uh, there are a lot of families here who will benefit from the services and recreation and things that we offer here that don't literally pay property taxes. Um, I don't pretend to understand what builders and developers and owners of these high-density communities pay, but there are a lot of people using our services and things like that who don't pay the property taxes that all of us will. Um, I did vote for some of you, Mr. Watson, Mayor, uh because of your supposed smart approach to development here. I would hope that you continue the course, stay strong. Um, it's surprising that we're developing as fast as we are. I didn't know that statistic until tonight. Uh, I realize there's limited real estate between the mountains and the lake and north and south here, right? And people have to live somewhere, but I would hope that we could do it smartly. And as was said, once you once you implement a tax increase, there's really no going back. So please choose wisely tonight. Allow maybe more time to consider the decision you're make making and allow more people to express um their thoughts and opinions on this. Thank you very much.
Jacob Briggs, twenty-five fifty West seven hundred South Syracuse.
I've always been proud to live in Syracuse and I still am. My great-great-grandfather first purchased land here in the eighteen seventies and the, our roots here go deep. I'm proud. The lower we can get on that list of compared to other cities of what we spend per person, the more proud I will be. That's something that we can be proud of to operate as efficiently and conservatively as possible. It may be that this is a unique year that it's going to be even harder for families to handle any tax increase. There's kind of a feeling in the economy where we might be on the edge of recession. And as a city, I think we can, it may be actually better to say no, instead of no increase in twenty-five, saying no increase this year and well, maybe in twenty-five, if we can push it down the road and find a way to get by. There's one aspect that I couldn't help but think of tonight, how the discussion might be different if prior redevelopment agency decisions had not funneled property tax monies to RDA plans. In any of these proposals for RDA funding, there's a phrase of the effect of the plan will not result in new or higher taxes. And I just can't help but think how tonight's discussion could be different if we had the full property tax money available from existing development. Now, the premise of the RDA, I think, needs to be challenged. The idea that that, those incentives are necessary to attract development. My experience is that that's not the biggest factor for developer. I was part of a project on the seller's side of a property in Vineyard, where Boyer actually was being offered incentive money, but eventually backed out. The incentive was not enough for Boyer. The reason they backed out was that they knew that the city of Vineyard would be difficult to work with in development. That's where we can make the best, if we have an environment where developers know they're not facing that kind of a reputation of a city that's hard to work with, that will make a lot more difference than if the developer's being offered incentive money through RDA. So, thank you. I'm not comfortable with a tax against the council tonight. I don't like that feeling. I respect and honor what you're doing. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rick Larson. I'm Syracuse resident. We've lived here just over two plus years. Love the city, love the people. But the city, like people have also said, has changed a lot in the last couple of years. It's a lot of like urban sprawl, high-density housing everywhere. It's losing that rural feel, you know, that everybody here I think loves. But I just wanted to comment on one thing I believe you said, Mr. Mayor, that you got about thirty-five million in federal grants last year and Leighton got three times that much in federal grants, give or take. Why has the city not looked into hiring somebody or even two people to do nothing but federal grants over the course of the year? You could increase that three point, you know, or thirty-five million dollars substantially by just having a couple of people doing nothing but federal grants and that would supplement the city quite a bit and you wouldn't have to do a tax increase. Our taxes too, are going to go up almost two hundred dollars. I'm retired. So I'm with everybody else, you know, with the economy, the way it is, inflation, everything's crazy. It's hard, you know, for people to come up with that kind of money. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Jacob. We were told in your presentation that the roads are repaved every seven years. For the last eleven years, I have lived on twenty-eight fifty south. In those eleven years, a neighbor of mine have asked more than a few times that the road be repaved. Those pleas have gone unheard and then damaged the road to the injury of my dear elderly neighbor, as well as the broken leg of a child. And I meant to believe that in over a decade, we have not had the funding to address these concerns of citizens for the safety of their friends and children, we can provide new vehicles for our parks and rec crew on the yearly. I'm sorry to say, but I fear greatly for the misuse of funds should this tax raise be approved. Thank you.
Harry Palmer, twenty-four eighty-six west, fifteen hundred south. I would like to mention that I've received a lot of services from the city. I can remember one time sitting in a chair with a blood clot in my lung and I couldn't get out. I'm thankful for the paramedics who came and helped me. I remember something taken off our doorstep that was worth about eight hundred, nine hundred dollars two days before Christmas. Somebody stole it. Our police retrieved it. They were able to do a sting and bring it back to us. The guy's still in jail. So there are a lot of benefits that we've received from the city, so so I want to thank you for that. However, twenty percent is way, way too much. On the news before I got here tonight, Big Lots is closing their doors because not enough people are going in and buying their foods and their products. We are struggling. You have to think about that. And I'll only say twenty percent is way too high. Thanks.
Shauna Millgate, seven twenty-eight, south eighteen twenty-five west. I am so disgusted with the amount of money the city workers make in this city. I worked with missiles. I wasn't even making a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know what all you people do for over two hundred thousand dollars a year. Seriously? That needs to be looked into big time. Cause I certainly don't make that and will never make that. And probably many people in this audience will never make that kind of money. I don't know what you do to earn that kind of money. But when I'm going down into missile silos and I'm going to nuclear submarines, I'm not even making a hundred thousand, really? That's our holy nation's security. That needs to be looked at big time. I guess that's all I have to say.
My name's Keith Howe. I live on twenty-one seventy-five south in Syracuse. Everybody's hit basically everything I want to say. Twenty percent is really hard this year for most people. You know, twenty, most people don't even get twenty percent in raises over their career, let alone for one year. The only other thing that I want to hit that hasn't been hit too hard is you mentioned that you're trying to expand the parks or the recreation and try to get more sports going. I hope it works out because past, I can see that you've been trying to improve it. But Syracuse has a bad reputation and that's why a lot of people have left it. So I do hope that that will help, but that's probably not going to help a lot of the tax burden. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Davis. I live in Syracuse. I'm at fourteen twenty-nine west, five fifty south. As I think about the property tax proposal, the increased proposal, some other people have brought it up and I think would have been interesting to see. There are a lot of good statistics in the presentation. One that I didn't see is what's the average rate of increase per property taxpayer this last year? Right? You're asking for an increase of twenty percent. What did the average person in their wages receive in the last year? It seems to me, particularly I feel for people who are on fixed income. I'm lucky. I'm still in my prime wage earning years. I'm also lucky that I work in the tech industry. I have a pretty good income compared to other people. However, I probably should have been a city manager. My income's not that good. But if I were to think about myself as a fixed wage person or living on a fixed income like somebody's on social security, and I would love to hear somebody who is in the audience tonight, if they are currently in that situation, to tell us what the real numbers are. But I have to imagine over the last year, you'd probably be feeling pretty good on social security if you got a five percent increase. I don't know if that's real, high, low, but it's probably, you'd probably be feeling pretty good if you did. If I was making what I knew a few people to be making a few years ago that were on social security, maybe like two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollars a month, at two thousand dollars a month, that five percent increase would be a hundred dollars a month. That would give me twelve hundred dollars a year of an increase. You're telling me that this property tax increase on the average for per house, if it's only around a hundred and five dollars per house per year, that's not that much. For that person on the fixed income, you just asked for essentially one month of their increase or a little more than a month of their increase for the entire year. That's a lot for that person. Seems to me a good way to approach a city budget and planning at the very front-loading part of the process would be to say, we've got all these statistics, let's look at the statistic of what people actually earned more this year. And let's draw a line in the sand that says we can't go over, if people only on average earned an extra three, three and a half percent this year, we can't go over one percent in what we're asking them to give. That seems like that would be a reasonable approach to planning the city budget. To come up with twenty percent when you know nobody got twenty percent increases in the previous year. That's a lot to ask of your citizens. Thank you.
I don't have a lot to say. My name is Diane Child and I live, I guess, in Walnut Grove, if you guys know where that is. It's in Syracuse. I've been here since ninety-seven. How many years is that? Over twenty. I thought I was moving to the country and there was a cow here when I moved. And a lot of land. It was beautiful. And Debbie Woodrow is here. She spoke to you earlier. She told me about life here in Syracuse. Taught me how to spell it. And she was a country girl. And I loved it. I loved the country. I was a jogger at that time and so I used to jog around. I came from Ogden and there were no cows there. So I came out here and there were cows and pigs and little lambs and as I jogged, that's all I saw. And it was great. And it was quiet except for a moon hour and then. And it was so neat. And that's what I moved out here for. And and then you guys went and ruined it. And you brought in people. I don't mean it to be funny, you guys, but you, you ruined it. With houses and you're ruining it more. You're bringing in all those high rises. I can't even see the mountains anymore. All I can see is windows. You know what I mean? And now you're raising my taxes. Well, I shouldn't even care because I can't see the cows and I can't see the mountains. And I can't see Syracuse anymore. You know what I mean? You know what you've done? It's not like it was when I moved in. Thank you. I guess.
Good evening. My name's Lance Scunner. I'm a Syracuse resident. Just one observation I wanted to point out is I believe the tax rate increase, the twenty percent, I think it was, we were told that that was like the max that it could be increased. So it kind of makes me nervous as to what the increase would actually need to be or what the city actually wants it to be. I don't know if someone could speak to that later. If twenty's the max, what is that they actually wanted? Was it thirty? Was it forty? Was it something higher? So that makes me nervous. If they accepted the twenty this year, next year, is it going to be even higher? So just an observation, maybe someone can talk to that. The second thing I wanted just to mention is it looks to me like from the presentation that the tax, the proposed tax increase is really to support future growth, but the burden is being placed on the existing residents. And so as the mayor pointed out, and I think it was very important, and I hope the council will really heed and listen to to what he pointed out there, that we're really not seeing the tax revenue yet from the sales tax, from the new businesses, from property tax, from new apartments, et cetera. So I would ask the council to really consider that and consider holding off increasing our taxes right now until we see what the real tax revenue is going to be from the property tax, sales tax, et cetera, for the future and then be able to reassess. That's all. Thank you.
Dennis Johnson, thirty-four fifteen west, twenty-two hundred south. I guess right off, I'm going to just say I'm opposed to the tax increase. I've lived here a short time of thirty-nine years. Since I've been here, my property taxes have gone up seven hundred and eighty-four percent in those thirty-nine years. And some people talk about the county assessor. In my opinion, the county assessor is the extortion chief in the country. And I called him and talked to him personally because I've, even though my house and my family doesn't require any more services from the city, I've paid thousands and thousands of dollars every year because they assessed the value of my house had gone up one thousand percent since I've lived here. And I haven't done anything other than some slight remodels. So I get a little frustrated when I see these tax increases and when somebody tells me it's only five dollars or ten dollars or a hundred dollars or whatever. When you add those five and tens and hundreds up multiple times, you're talking a lot of money. So I think when I hear politicians talk about how many jobs they've created, the only jobs that are being created in the country right now is government jobs so they can further regulate us and tax us to death, but don't allow us to be what we want to be. The government has plenty of dollars. They have no sense. That's all I have to say.
Hello, my name is Michaela Messina. I live at twenty-seven forty-seven south, twelve sixty west, Barber Acres. I'm just here to reiterate what everybody has said, but I think a poignant resident before me pointed out is you take your presentation that Brody gave us and he said it's a hundred and two dollars a year and divided it out eight dollars a month. Some of us, many of us, I'm sure, that run our household budgets have had to go and find eight dollars in subscriptions and cancel subscriptions per month. I have had to do that. I have had to do that. I'm a registered nurse. I work full-time for Intermountain Health. I'm in my career about 13 years. I went to nursing school with Julie. I'm looking for a part-time job 13 years into my career to fund my household budget. That's not something, you know, I worked part-time, like two jobs when I first started my career and all of that stuff. But now with the economy and all of this stuff. My significant other is a retired Ogden police lieutenant. So I love the police. I understand the services that we have to provide for the new growths that this council may not be responsible for, but is having to now answer for. But I don't understand, I haven't seen anything, why a police lieutenant is needed now. That's administration, administrative bloat, maybe. Might need to be considered there. An assistant city manager, maybe this isn't the year you get help. Maybe you have to do with what you have, something else that you can maybe line item. I think I saw in previous minutes, someone suggested maybe approving the budget without the lieutenant. Well, maybe we do it without the lieutenant and without the assistant city manager this year. And that improves the percentage and the $8 a month that I've had to go and pick out and cancel subscriptions. So thanks for your time. Don't want your job, don't want your job, don't want your job, but thank you for doing it.
My name is Lance Cheshire, 1100 South, 1675 West. Lived in Davis County 20 years, been in Syracuse nine. And I was here at the last, one of the council meetings objecting to the condensed housing. And thank goodness they didn't put some of that in right there on Antelope and Banbury. But for the record, I'm pro-police, I'm pro-fire department, but I am against the taxes. I mean, I'm 57 years old. I've worked since I was 14 and I'm tired of paying taxes. The average person right now, if you look at the IRS website, pays 97 different taxes. Air transportation tax, building permit tax, business registration tax, capital gains tax. If you smoke, there's a cigarette tax, court fines, disposal fee, dog tax. Driver's license.
John Woodrow.
Okay.
Apologize.
If you drive, there's a driving license tax, employer health insurance tax, employer Medicare tax, employer social security tax, environmental fees, estate tax, excise tax, federal corporate tax, federal income tax, federal unemployment tax. If you enjoy fishing, you have to have a fishing license or the tax for that. You have to have a food and beverage tax. There's a franchise tax, a garbage tax, a gasoline tax, a gift tax. If you own a gun, you have to have a permit, which is a tax. Hazardous material tax, highway access tax. If you stay in a hotel, there's a hotel tax. Hunting tax, import tax, individual health insurance tax, inheritance tax, inspection tax. That's 30 of the taxes. 30 of the 97 that the average person pays. And to sit up here and tell me that it's the same and justify it that it's the same as a cell phone bill, that a food and beverage bill, I think is a bunch of BS. It's ridiculous, right? And to justify that it's only $8 a month, I can afford the $8 a month. There's a lot of people maybe in here that can't afford $8 a month, but I don't want to pay the $8 a month. I'm tired of paying the $8 a month. It's like the frog in a pot of boiling water. That's what we are here, right? You justify 10 cents here, you justify five bucks here, you justify $20 there and you put a frog in a pot of boiling water. You just slowly turn it up, slowly turn it up, and the frog gets cooked. But if you take that frog and you throw him in a pot of boiling water, he's going to jump out. And if we didn't have any taxes and we came in here and all of a sudden we got taxed with as much as we're getting taxed right now, there'd be a revolution. I propose we don't have a tax. I propose we readjust it and reevaluate and come up with a different solution. Thank you.
This is Ginger Weathersby. I live at 3493 West, 2400 South. And I've lived here since 1996. I did not plan on coming up here, but I work as a retired health counselor for those who are Medicare and retiring state employees, public servant employees for P E H P. And I see these people come in every day to afford their health insurance. And I sympathize with those who on social security got a 3.2% increase, which probably covers their food. I raised five children here. Three of them are public servants. I am a policeman and other entities for the state, and not one of them could afford to move here. They've all gone to Box Elder County because that's the only place they could afford a home. And I know that there are members who are in the same situation, that wanted their kids and their grandchildren to live close to them. I can't afford to sell my house. I can't afford to move anywhere else and downsize because of the market. That's not your fault. It's just what it is. And I agree with one of the prior people that said, in a lot of ways, you are left to solve the problems of prior councils and prior mayors. And I am so sorry that you had these hard decisions. And I am so thankful that you're willing to serve. I would just ask that we might think of it, because I work for a dot org and because we serve the public, I know we're a dot gov, but I think maybe if we got the mindset of a dot org, we're responsible for every penny that we spend. We're responsible for how it affects our customers. And I would ask, like the previous comment, that the vote be postponed and a little bit more research, a little bit more comment, a little bit more reflection. And if the tax is passed in some form, would we consider, like Davis County does, with some kind of tax abatement based on income or age for those that are on fixed incomes and can't afford it? They've more than paid their dues living here for all these years. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Everybody Weaver, 1360 Banbury Drive. Just wanted to say, I do agree with your, some of the ideas you were talking about, maybe technology usage for some of the white collar jobs. And then needing more businesses for that sales tax. I think I would like to see more of a balanced growth model moving forward on, you know, and maybe that's just me being uneducated and not coming enough to these meetings. But I'd like to see that because it's just been, like everybody's saying, just people moving in like crazy and I'm not seeing balance there. I do understand that growth requires coverage with the firefighters and police. As more people are here, we're going to need more people working for the city. But what about other city workers? I saw on that sheet that there was only leadership within the fire department and things like that. I was a city worker myself. I used to work for Roy City. And I was able to actually live in the city that I worked in. So that was cool. I wanted to move to Syracuse because that's where I kind of grew up with my family and I wanted to move back here. But when I was trying to look at a very similar job to the one I was doing in Roy, it paid less and it cost more to live here. I couldn't even live in the city if I were to live or get a job here. So I had to go find other jobs that made me more money to be able to even live here. And, you know, I came here for more of the rural stuff than Roy was. Let's see. Another thing that I wanted to say is not only this tax increase, but Dominion was mentioned. Well, Rocky Mountain Power, they've announced that they want to do like a 30% increase over the next however many years. First thing I would ask them is, why didn't they think ahead and invest their profits into the company? I know this isn't a company, but again, that balanced growth. I mean, we need to get that figured out to where we're not having to take it all out of our pockets immediately to fix the problem. It's mentioned a couple of times, volunteer workers. I don't think that's going to be a thing. I mean, people are working multiple jobs just to try to survive. You're not going to get volunteers or volunteers that are worth having, I would assume. So again, we need to invest into the workers that are here, make sure that they're getting taken care of and make sure that they're being productive. That's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Richard Campbell. I live at 1873 South, 2150 West, Syracuse. Just right behind the Reddy Complex. So I was thinking about the internet. I pay $35 a month and probably other people pay more. But whenever the internet company calls or doesn't call and they just bump up my price, I call them back and say, I'm not going to do that. You're not offering anything more. I'm not going to pay extra. City's not offering anything more. An extra fire station is for the extra people. I'm not getting extra services. I want my prices to stay the same. I think that's the right thing to do. In fact, the city is failing us. Things are getting worse in the city. It's seem busier. And you expect us to pay for it, to make things worse, as other people have mentioned. I think you guys should get better at what you're doing or don't get funding. That's the way I see it. So. Oh, and to put it this way too. I mean, services I get from the police station haven't really been very effective for me. I'm getting harassed by the Reddy Complex. And the city comes by and they find them in violation and they haven't done anything. So maybe I just need to start doing something and then we'll start paying you.
Hi, my name is Heather Christensen. I live at 1312 Gateshead Court. And I just want to correct a comment that I heard from one of the people here, that this is not a business. This is a business. This is Syracuse City Corporation, okay? And forgive me, but I also own a small business in Syracuse, okay? So I've been a resident here for 11 years. And if I went to one of my customers and I said, you need to cut back on your cell phone bills in order to afford my service, I'd be fired, okay? I want to let you know that I vote every year, okay? I try to stay on top of what's going on in the city. Pretty sure I voted for every single one of you, okay? Keep that in mind, that you guys were voted in to take care of the people. And what I am hearing is the people don't want this. The people can't afford this. I also just came from back to school night. I just paid my registration fees for my junior high daughter. I just paid for her back to school clothes. I had to tell her, sorry, I've got to buy groceries this week. So you can't have new shoes. Even though your shoes have holes in them, you're going to have to deal with it for a minute. That is not right. I work full-time. We also run a full-time business here in Syracuse. I got news for you. A 20% increase is enough for me to pick up my family and my business and leave Syracuse. Thank you.
I'm Darla Womatsu, Holbrook. I live at 1780 South. I don't know, somewhere back here. Anyway, my job is, my full-time job is to think outside the box and try to figure out problems. And I think that's what you guys need to do. You need to put yourselves back into the position of, what would you do if you were out here sitting with us? And how would you feel? You guys can't, I can't, it's hard to look at you and say, you know, that you guys understand because you guys are the ones that made that decision now. But I think when you're voting, I think you need to put yourself, take yourself out of that, out of the position and say, okay, I was sitting in this, you know, maybe sitting back here thinking, okay, all of these people have valid points and we need to think about that and vote again and not vote for the increase. Now, when I, you know, when I myself into my job, I think outside the box of, okay, what can we do to fix it? Why not try to get businesses here that maybe other areas don't have, like, you know, Trader Joe's or something, where people are coming from other cities to spend money in Syracuse? Something that Trader Joe's is the only place in Salt Lake. You have to go down there. So we're supporting them down there when we could be supporting Syracuse by shopping here. So yes, when you're thinking about that, I think you need to think about, let's bring businesses that are going to bring other people into our city to spend so that that revenue comes back to the city instead of making our property taxes go up. Because this, they already go up with for the county. And I'm just going to say it, I have no children, but we have 20% of our property taxes go to pay for schools, okay? Never had children. I've been here for 30 years in Syracuse. And, you know, over the years, I've paid my fair share. I'm tired of it. And these high-rise housings, what are the people that are going to be moving in with all these children? What are they paying for the schools? Nothing. You say that maybe they're going to be, the companies are going to be paying the sales tax or the property tax, but that's not even, doesn't even justify what we're paying for it. So I think you guys need to think about putting yourself in our position when you're voting on this.
My name is Chris Bertoli. I'm at 2850 South Syracuse. I live on the same street as that little girl that came up here with the four-inch cracks in the road. I've driven around Syracuse for years, right? Never seen such a bad neighborhood. Emailed multiple times, get response of, oh, it's somewhere down there. We're looking at it or whatnot. But when I look at your budget or your roads, or it says servicing, it just has a budget $500,000, I think. I can't find anything else where that would be. Where is it on a schematic? Where is the timeline? Where are the, you know, where is that going to come up and be fixed? Literally, minimum four-inch cracks, 20 yards, every 20 yards in the whole neighborhood. Also, $58,000 in two years of salary increase seems ridiculous to me. That's why it's pretty easy to make that slide and put that up there. I don't know what that percent is, probably like a 23% increase in two years in the salary for a city manager. Sounds a little bit too much for me. But I wasn't planning on coming up here, but I'd say a couple of things. Thanks. Oh, one more thing. Reason why I came up here is because I just Googled Utah's Right to Know. All those salaries and things are on that website. So if you want to Google those and punch in names, you can find it on Utah's Right to Know.
Good evening. John Collinay, 919 West, 2525 South. I just want to take a moment, just, everybody's hit some really good points. I spent a lot of time in the federal government and I can tell you, overhead growth is the killer. That's what absolutely drives it. And it's always easy to justify, say, I want this, I want, this would be great, we can do this. You got to think like a business. What are they bringing in? What are they doing for you? You have to compare it. And I got to tell you, it's always easy to say, yeah, well, we can do this. I need an assistant city manager. Okay, what new services, what are you going to provide that you haven't provided in previous years? We needed another police lieutenant. Did we increase the number of police or their number of shifts increase? What drove this? As I say, I used to do manpower at the end and they, you know, they kiddily called me Dr. No because I was always the one saying, no, you can't justify that growth. Everybody wants more. Everybody can say, yeah, I need this. But do you really? If this is your money and this is our money, why? Why are we doing this? There needs to be good justification. And if you can't justify it, why are you doing it? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Someone wants to make a comment.
June Bishop, 758 West, 3150 South. You know what? This is, tax increase is probably not going to stop me from getting my Pop and Murphy's pizza tonight. But I'm an old retired guy and I got a good retirement. But I remember when my wife didn't work. when my wife didn't work and things were tight. And you know what? Sometimes my kids went without shoes until the next payday. See, we're in a, we're in a real problem here, because you're talking about business. Well, a lot of cafes and restaurants in Syracuse have gone in and out. And what are we going to do? We're taking money out of people's pockets because going to a cafe or a movie or anything else is discretionary money. That's money you got, you can spend, you entertain. Well, you're taking that money away. Now, I'm an old man, got a whole man's job at one of the mortuaries around here, and I happen to work with a guy that's a retired city manager of a landlocked city in Weber County that is probably going to have more revenue from their businesses than Syracuse will ever have. And I said, well, you were, must have been pretty fat. And he says, oh, Jim, you can never have enough money.
Dorella Horrocks, I live at three zero zero eight South Old Immigrant Road in Syracuse. Um, I've enjoyed the comments tonight. Really appreciate those who have come up and spoke. Um, they have had some very valid points and I appreciate what we have made, as I appreciate your jobs also. I support those who suggested postponing this vote right now. There's been a lot of good questions asked tonight that I hope that you would take time to consider and get answers to. I'm also proposing a forum via a website on Syracuse City site where more residents that couldn't be here tonight can ask questions, as well as some of these that have been asked, and we receive answers via data. I haven't seen a lot of data tonight supporting possibly why we don't have this increase. I don't support the twenty percent right now. It's very, very high. Um, I also believe in free speech and don't appreciate being told when I can't applaud to something that I agree with. I understand that there are rules, but I'm asking you to reconsider that rule at Syracuse City buildings, at Syracuse City meetings. So when we hear something that we appreciate and we support, we can show that appreciation and support. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment?
Hi, my name is Sterling Andreason. I live at eight ninety two West, twenty eight sixty South here in Syracuse. I'm a resident of about twenty years, almost more, a little more than twenty years. And I just wanted to, there's a point that has not come up yet um to the fact that taxes increases are cumulative, accumulative. You get taxed on what you were taxed before, again and again and again. But three years ago, I remember a thirty percent increase, increase in taxes. And then a couple of years ago, I remember a thirty percent increase in taxes on, when we were having trouble keeping our police in town. Now you're adding another twenty percent. Say my taxes five years ago were a hundred bucks. That first thirty year, thirty percent increase increased my taxes to one hundred and thirty dollars, okay? Two years later, I got another thirty percent in te- increase in taxes. That increased my taxes from a hundred dollars to almost a hundred and seventy dollars. Then you're asking, now you're asking for another twenty percent. Twenty percent increase on that hundred and seventy dollars would make my taxes total, my accumulated taxes over the last five years, two hundred bucks. Do you see the, do you see the problem here? You're eating us to death. Not you. I mean, I really, if I think about you individually, I really appreciate your service. But it's not just city government, it's the government in general. They are eating us alive. I've had a two hundred percent increase in my city taxes, my property taxes in the last five years. Two hundred percent. I'm not going to make that up. I live on social security and that money I cannot make back. It's gone. Please, please, please consider some other way. There ought to be some way, and I think, Dave, you had a, I remember your comments on the, on Facebook or something about, we need to change our tax base. You can't take it from us because we are limited in our assets. You have to find some other way to bring business in, to accumulate a tax base that is not your citizenship. Understand what I'm trying to say? We cannot be your tax base. Thank you.
My name is Kami Lanning. I live at seven eighty one South, thirty nine hundred West here in Syracuse. I um do home daycare and I'm the only provider in my home. And if you're going to give us taxes of twenty percent, I have to turn to my parents and raise my bill each week or each month so that I can pay my taxes. So now not only are they paying twenty percent for you, but they're going to be paying me more. And some people have two, three, four kids and both parents have to work. So I would hope that you would consider lowering the tax so that parents can work and they have quality care for their children. Thank you.
It's nice to meet all of you. Um, I'm originally from Battleford, Utah. I was, I'm an eighties baby. Um, it was beautiful back then. There was a lot of land. I remember having a duck. It was something that you don't see today. Um, I moved away from here to California. Life is much different there than it is here. Uh, my mom passed away from something very devastating like COVID, and we brought her back home. And I wanted to be close to my mother because watching her die after eighty one days was really tough on me. Um, coming back here, now about most two years, finally actually moving into someplace I actually call home, which is Syracuse. I've seen that prices and the cost of living has definitely gone up all over the place. The one big thing that we don't talk about here in this room today is the amount of job losses that are happening across the board. The tech sector is what I work in. I work for a company called Cisco. I mean, as you guys probably heard in the news, they get ready to lay off a number of large people. Intel, fifteen thousand people. The list goes on, right? It's making it hard for people like us to live that dream, even in places like Syracuse, Utah. I haven't lost my job, but I speak for a lot of us here that, you know, the property taxes, the increases here in Syracuse going up periodically, which is standard, I understand that. But given the economic climate, we need to question if another increase is really necessary right now. And I've heard that we've all talked about up here, the residents here, that you've been told this many times and it still has gone up. I know you have your reasonings, but let's talk about some things here. Crime rates and fire safety. While crime has risen by twenty one, twenty eight percent this past year, violent crimes have went down by twenty six point seven percent. Making Syracuse still overall a safer place to live. Yeah, good job with how you guys are dealing with running things here. The fire department has managed things while keeping our community very safe. However, our community is currently facing unprecedented economic challenges, as I just mentioned. Rising inflation, job losses, and increased living costs, and additional tax burden can place undue stress on residents here in and of itself. While it's crucial to maintaining our emergency services, it's equally important to consider the timing and impact of tax increase on the community, particularly with our fire history and showing a relatively safe environment with well-managed risk. Again, good job, but it's very, very low. But with the rising inflation, job losses, and living costs, adding more financial stress with a tax hike, it may too much more for many of us residents here. Now call us some of the things, cost of living, concrete prices in Utah have soared by ten to fifteen percent in the last year. That's quite a bit, right? Um, job losses, again, as I talked about, we're going to hit the tech sector and also the retail space. That's also adding to the financial stress that we're already feeling here. I call for one thing, hopefully, consideration wise, is that with higher costs, job losses, and economic uncertainty, we need to reconsider this tax increase. Maybe we can find other ways to secure the need of funding, or at least deploy this.
You know, time is a different way.
Thank you again for listening.
Last call in the house. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing for the audience present. I do have to defer, Cassie, were there any messages sent in to be read into the record? Okay, they're in that moment, so that concludes our uh public hearing. At this point in time, I'm going to give the council a chance to respond. There's uh several things that I wrote down. If they don't respond to, I will weigh in. But there's just a couple of things that I want to point out before we begin here. Number one, all of our city meetings um are public and they are recorded. So if you want to know what went into it or what arguments were made for the budget, you could do that. I understand it's not very popular and it's not something that a lot of people want to do. We spent an entire day in February when we began this process. I began the meeting by saying, this is going to be a really tough year. We have a lot of things that have lined up that we cannot do anything about, and we have a lot of requests for things to be in the budget. So this is going to be a really tough year. I don't agree with everything that's in this budget, but that's not the problem. I mean, that's not something that is unusual. It's common that a city council member or mayor doesn't agree entirely with the budget that ends up being put forward because it is a majority rule uh management. It is a, we are a democracy. So uh, I do want to address the one question that said, you know, what could this have been? The reason it can only be this much is because we chose in June to advertise that this was the most that would be asked for. So technically, there is no cap. You could ask for anything. But that's what was chosen to be advertised, and that's why you cannot vote for any more than that tonight. You could vote for less. Uh, we cannot defer these meetings. These, this meeting was set in May uh long before school even got out. So the fact that they scheduled their back to school night on something we'd already advertised and registered with the state, that we would hold a meeting and a vote tonight, that's something I have to do to the, with the state. So I can't change that. So um I understand it, it's something that we do in other meetings where we will table something to another night, but we have a specific requirement by the state to determine our results by a specific deadline. So that's not an option. Um, again, I have not, uh, you know, I, I've made my arguments through many meetings as to where we could be and where we should be. And these people have all made arguments about what should be in and what should be out. I'm going to let them all speak for themselves, but the bottom line is, in the end, it will be the majority that decides. It won't be a hundred percent that everybody agrees. It's just the way it is. Counsel, who would like to go first?
I'd like to start if that's okay.
Oh, you're up.
So uh, as an elected representative, I appreciate all of you showing up and voicing your opinions. It is helpful for me. Um, I, I'm, I don't love the form of the truth in taxation hearing because like the mayor said, we start planning to get to this point very early in the year. February, um, we started planning and, and telling what our goals were, were. My hope and uh was at the beginning of the year that we could have no tax increase, or at least hold the rate, meaning only increase on the increase that you um incurred in, in, in your property value assessment. As we got into things, uh especially with a unique year like this where we're staffing a new fire station, I realized that probably wasn't a realistic goal or a list, realistic goal that I was shooting for. Um, and I, however, I still was wanting to be as conservative as we possibly could, and I think I was a, I, I think I was in the minority on that. I, 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 I think I was, maybe one or two uh of us agreed with that. Um, but having heard all of you here um tonight, um, and, and we've had many discussions over the past months uh about this, a- and I think compromise to a certain degree because we didn't have a majority. I think that's why we have a cap of about twenty percent. And again, we don't have to approve that twenty percent, but with your, with your outpouring of comments, the emails we've received, the calls I've received, the text messages I've received, um, I think we can sharpen our pencils, in my opinion. I still think there's several um positions that we can, we can go without. There's, there's a lot of things happening that are positive as far as business development goes in the city. And I think this year is a stop, we need a stopgap measure to get us through and, and, and only do those essentials so that we can realize the efforts of the, the business development and the, the new business that we, we think is coming here in the next year. So um as your elected representative, I think we can reduce the assistant city manager position. I think we can reduce the police lieutenant position, and I think we can reduce uh the recreation coordinator position. That reduces our total budget deficit by about half, and it reduces the tax increase or the proposed tax increase by about half. And so that's where I am at after hearing your voices.
I'll go.
Julie?
Okay. Well, I agree with Councilman Watson. I think that the tax increase is too high. I was elected. This is my first term and I'm elected because I was concerned about the growth, the high density growth in Syracuse and the fast pace that we were growing at and the taxes that were burdened on it year after year after year, and that's why I ran. And I um, I do believe we need to definitely cut more and reduce the tax increase, and we need to relook at it in twelve months. Um, you know, in the next, as Councilman Watson said, in the next few years, five years, we're going to see a different balance, you know, come into the city between residential and business, and that's what we need to see. We need to see our business base grow. Um, I think that sometimes you have to say no and you have to wait for the sales tax revenue to increase, and that's the responsible thing to do that doesn't burden our citizens with ex, with additional taxes. So um I really can't support a tax increase.
We'd like to go next.
I'm, I'm happy to go next.
Brett?
Save somebody from getting rocks thrown at them, probably. Um, but there's been a lot of good information that's been provided tonight. Uh, we've talked about slowing growth and raising grants and cutting programs and volunteers and other ideas. I think those are all important things to consider, but tonight the issue for me is, and I think it's the, the primary issue that needs to be dealt with, are we going to ask the Syracuse households to pay an extra eight dollars and fifty cents a month for the uh a- additional positions that have been asked for? That's sounding like some of the others are saying four twenty five is enough per month. Uh, but I'm looking at, w- we have a fire station. There are standards out there on what firefighter presence should exist in a city. And we are trying to meet those standards and to staff a, a fire department and a fire station that is there and is needed. Uh, it, it just, somebody just didn't come into this and say, well, let's build a new fire station. It's needed. The location is needed. If something happened in this city to where there was a problem with uh, you know, a road being cracked- in this city to where there was a problem with, uh, you know, a road being cracked, it, it could divide this city in half. So what are we looking for with this particular budget for this year? We're looking at adding some firefighters, uh, to benefit the city. So that's how I view the firefighters. Uh, with regard to the police today, based on, on standards and based on the, the information, as I understand it from the police chief, we are still light in police presence right now. What we're looking, an ideal situation would be, uh, one police officer per thousand people. We're light and even with adding these additional positions, we're still a little bit light in meeting that standard. The question I have to look at from a fire standpoint and from a police standpoint is does, do we want to at least be at a minimum standard in this community? And my position is yes, we do. The crossing guards, I, I would hope that everybody wouldn't give too much kickback on that. Um, the assistant city manager position, we are in a place in this city right now. It's kind of, I mean, the, it's an analogy. It's not a perfect analogy, but it's almost like we're building a dam with the idea of having some water behind it to help carry us through the day. And right today, we're about 75% through this project and we have people saying, well, stop spending the damn money. Stop, uh, what, where's the water that's in place? Well, the answer is we're 75% of the way through a project. There's going to have to be time and effort expended in order to get this sales tax, uh, revenue that is coming in. We have a city staff who, and, and a mayor who is, uh, like I believe past mayors as well, have worked very hard to try and get these businesses brought into our community. Uh, this staff information with the assistant city manager and with the, um, community position there, those are things that are needed in order to help progress and get us to the next stage. Uh, it's a $4.50 ask for the community. I've heard some issues here about, uh, the, the amount of salaries that are being earned by this city staff. People pull out numbers that include benefits. I think it's important for the public to know that these, those salaries just aren't, uh, pulled out of a vacuum somewhere. There are benchmark studies that are done. There are, there's analysis of what other communities are paying for those same positions. And, and it's balanced and looked at there that I, I think that if it were looked at carefully, our, uh, city staff, uh, are, are probably not at market rate. And, and in some cases have accepted a, uh, a willingness on their part to take a, a less of, a lesser amount of increase because they want to do their part personally. Now, I don't know how many of you would want to voluntarily cut a salary, uh, that you were able to earn. But, but that's a market rate. We, we're just not sitting up here analyzing this kind of a thing without measuring against standards that are out there as well. Uh, it, it's my viewpoint. Do we have a lot of work to do still? Yes. Do we need to look at growth issues? Yes. Do we need to look at different ways to, uh, to, to, to balance things in the future and bring in economic things? Yes. But the issue tonight is, are we saying that $8.50 is too much for this community as a whole to absorb? And I say this very carefully because I realize people are in different positions and, and $8.50 can hurt somebody. But we live in a community that on average has a, has an income of 125 to 140,000 dollars a month. And to me, it would be disingenuous and it would be a disservice to say that, that we should not have the adequate police presence. We should not have the adequate fire presence and we, we shouldn't have the adequate staffing that is needed to help us get to the next stage with this community, uh, and, and business economic development that's there. So, uh, in all honesty, somebody asked, who was the one that, that said, uh, this increase was appropriate amount? I, I voted for it. And I, and to be honest, uh, I was open to some of the different, uh, additions that were there as well. But we've, we've met, we've spent hours doing this. We've tried to carefully analyze it. To me, this is a conceded amount, but it's a necessary amount based on police, fire, those, those kinds of things that are going to help us get to the, to the next stage. So, uh, that's the reason and the analysis that I've used uh, in saying that this is an appropriate and a, and a conceded number, uh, but probably inappropriate.
Uh, council member, I'll just give you a chance to correct that figure. I think you misspoke and said 120 to 140 a month. And you probably meant annually.
Oh yeah. No, I don't think.
There was a little bit of a stir and I thought I'd give you a chance to correct that.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Yeah, right. It, if I misspoke, I apologize, but yeah.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Jen will wrap it up, so I'll go next. One of the things that, um, first of all, I, I agree with, with the things you guys are saying. Um, I do think that we, the people need to not only look at property taxes here, but we also need to look at, um, the taxes that we pay with regards to sales taxes, which again, we don't control. And also salary taxes. An interesting thing about, um, this truth in taxation that is given to us by the state is they don't follow their own rules. So as Brody mentioned, one of the things that happens in truth and taxation is if your property value goes up, the tax rate goes down. So at the end of the day, Syracuse gets a dollar or whatever it may be. The, this, the, the state doesn't do that. If your salary goes up, you pay more to the state. If your sales, if, if prices of food go up, you pay more to the state. And in doing so, um, you see the state with a billion dollars in, 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 in excess revenue that the city, if we tried to do what the state does, well, we can't because they tell us we can't because we have this truth in taxation that we're obligated to follow, which again is a misnomer, that they don't. So I would encourage you to write your senators, your legislators and tell them to apply truth and taxation to both, um, our income taxes and our sales taxes. So that's your homework assignment. Um, the next thing, um, Syracuse does have some issues that we're facing. Um, growth is one of them. And one of the big issues we have with growth is many of us moved in, in our twenties and thirties, maybe even forties, many of us, some of us have been here longer. But the rest of us have all moved in in the past 20 years. And the problem is we are an aging population. We have Syracuse starting to hit the 55 plus. A lot of us all at the same time. And this is one of the things that's actually stressing some of our emergency responses. We're, as a city are getting older around the same time. Older cities, you know, they have younger people move in, but a lot of us are all aging at the same time. Um, that also means that most of our city is less than 20 years old. But since we've had so much growth in that 20 years, what we're also seeing is a lot of our infrastructure is wearing out at the same time. We do have roads that we can't replace them fast enough because of this growth. But again, it's growth that none of us here on the city council had anything to do with, but we are trying to fix it. Please know that we are not asking for this money willy nilly. We, we, we know that this is a tough situation. Um, another thing that was brought up is salaries. I, I heard many of you say, I wish I made 225,000 a year. Um, don't we all? But the bottom line is they're not making that. I think each of you would be surprised if you took your salary and calculated what all of your benefits and everything add up to, it's more than you think. Just so you know, the starting salary of that assistant city manager is actually closer to 110. And then now, now again, this is based on what it takes to get someone. You, you don't want a, a high school student running your city. I promise you. Um, but that's the start, that, that's where it starts at. Um, if that sounds like a, a lot to you, apply. We need good people in those positions. But that is what, um, it takes to get someone in there that's qualified to help run a city. Again, you don't want, um, a guy with his high school, no, I won't say that because there's some pretty great high school students out there. Um, but you do want someone well qualified to help run the city. And I know our current city manager, I've seen him here at nine and 10 o'clock at night trying to get all of the things done. Our city is big enough that we now need to give that position some help. We, we've asked for additional people to help write grants. That will be one of his, his, um, responsibilities is to help coordinate those efforts. And there's a thousand other things that our city manager is spending well more than 40 hours a week trying to manage. And it's time that we take care of some of these city employees. So, um, I'm not willing to, um, negotiate on that one because I see the, the need and I think that things are being left undone because we don't have the people to do it. Um, a couple of other things, um, that were brought up. I just want to go through because I heard a lot of great questions. Um, I've heard a lot about planning ahead and that is fantastic. I, I, I love that. We have been planning. But there is one thing that I think everyone wants the city to do is just save up for future expenses. That, that's in principle, that sounds like a great idea. But what that means is we would be collecting more money than we're using and just putting it in the bank. I actually don't think any of you want us to do that. We really do try and on an average year, we try and use the money that we have without trying to just stash it in a bank account for hopefully someday. Now we do have a rainy day fund, I will say that. But you don't want us just collecting stuff in the, and thinking maybe we're going to do something in the future. We try and work on an as needed basis and we don't try and tax you more than we have to so that someday we'll be able to afford something. We, we, we kind of do work on a day to day budget so that we only ask what we need from year to year. Um, I also want to, to thank all of you guys for being out here. I love your comments. This is great feedback. Some of you have mentioned the out of box thinking. There is an election coming up and I would encourage as many of you as possible. I would love to see 20 people on the ballot for city council. That makes sure that we get the best people in there. Please think about running. That, that's, there's a decent chance some of you out there would do a better job than some of us. Then I ask you to run, please. We need out of the box thinkers. We need people that are willing to go through this line by line and figure out where we can do better. We think we've done the best we can. And like I said, not everyone agrees with everything that's occurred. Um, but there, we, we have to compromise. If one of us draws a line and says, I'm not going to compromise, government fails. This is a representative government and each one of us are trying to do the best we can with the information we have. And we don't always disagree because we have come from different sides of life. And that's just the fact. This is a compromised budget. And we've, I believe, to a certain extent, we've necked it down as, as much as we can. Um, in one of the prior meetings, I did ask that the, originally the police lieutenant wasn't in there. Um, I asked it be added in, but if that helps with a concession, I, I'm willing to give that up. If that helps us come to a compromise where we can be as, as efficient as possible. Um, let me see if I covered all the notes. One thing I noticed Layton was really low on there. Please be aware that Layton has no secondary water. We do have a service that Layton doesn't have. So be aware that's why they were so low, at least one of the reasons. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Um, growth. I agree, we need to slow down. One of the fundamental issues we have is we don't have the right as government. You don't want to give us the right to tell you, you can't sell your land. These farmers, they were moving into the second, third, fourth generations and I, they feel it's time. I, I cannot tell someone, no, you cannot sell your land to a developer. That is not within our jurisdiction. You don't want it to be. This is a right that they own. They own the land and to a certain extent, they have the right to sell their land. Now we can control the zoning, but that's about all we can do. And, and we try and be judicious with that. Again, there's something we're doing wrong. Please call us, tell us, or better yet, there's an election next year. I ask for you guys to run. We need good people. Um, let's see. Um, I want to say I covered most of everything. Um, oh, robots, because the mayor brought that up. We all love them. So I, I am happy to say that, um, due to, you know, some of our city council members going out and, and trying to find more efficient ways to do that. I am proud to say that all of our lines on our fields are now painted by robots. It's kind of fun to watch. Um, we are trying to be efficient where we can. And what that does is that allows someone, instead of having a person walking around painting those lines, they can set that and then they can go be doing other things. We're trying to make our employees more efficient. We're trying to do the best we can with the money we have and the personnel we have. Um, but yeah, I, I'm, so that, that's what I'm, I'd like to, if that helps um, us come to a, a good place and, and reduce the tax rate, I'm, I'm, I, I can make that concession.
My turn.
Go for it, Jen.
Well, I'm going to go through this by what the order of the questions that were asked, except Ms. Martinez. I'm going to hold yours for the end because I have something to add to it. So, um, Ms. Laura, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name. Uh, you mentioned holding building permits as a council. Just recently, we have discussed and talked about, you know, our growth is just out of hand and we have to. And that was just in the last two recent meetings. So you're welcome to watch those on the recordings. Um, pertaining to that, I am happy to say that since Mr. Paul Watson and myself have joined the city council, we have not approved a single high density housing use in, unit, um, since 2002 or 22, sorry. The ones that are being built now were already approved before we joined the council. And except the one on Bannenbury did get a revision, but I don't think they've started that one yet. Um, why didn't we budget for it and plan for it like Jordan said, um, Mr. James? Um, well, we did plan for it. We have studies that are also online on the city website that we did for the fire department. This shows you the breakdown of call response times, verbatim, and where the three, the, between the fire station we have now, where we're building fire station 32 and later on and way future. So don't get nervous, way future, hopefully way, uh, where 33 will might possibly go. We're at the point now where we don't have a choice and human life is important to everybody in this room. I would like, like to think. Um, Ms. Kathy Brown. Okay, that was it. Uh, Ms. Catherine Sutton, you ta, talked about how things are changing. Um, the birds are going away. Many of you noticed you probably have a lot of grasshoppers in your yards, right? Well, that's because the waterways are being piped in. There's no water for them. So they're leaving. So now we have pest problems even more. Um, let's see. Ms. Debbie Woodrow, the high density revenue, I am not sure what the high density income for property taxes, but they still do have to pay property tax in the apartment complexes and things like that. And those do fall to their renters to pay that. They're not, the business isn't going to absorb the cost of extra property tax. The people who are renting there are going to absorb that cost of property tax. If you own a house and have renters in it, are you going to absorb that cost of property tax? Or are you going to apply it to your renters? They still have to pay the property tax. Um, I didn't know tonight was back to school night. I apologize. I even have a child. Um, Mr. Jacob Rings, Beings, I believe. Um, he talked about pushing it down the road more and more. Well, we've done that quite a bit for a lot of things, like the police department, right on the, on the budget or the presentation that he gave earlier. Those fixing, what is the word I'm looking for? Fixing renovations to the police department. We're originally budgeted for $80,000. But because we continue pushing it down the road and don't want to fix it, now they're at $180,000. Next year, they're going to be even more. So the more you push it down, the more it's going to cost you in the long run. I know you don't want to hear that. I don't want to hear it either, but that is in fact the case. So it's here, grant writers, uh, Mr. Rick Larson, you mentioned grant writers. That would be a problem tonight for most of folks here. Because right now that really feels like an unnecessary position. And I have a feeling a lot of the people here tonight wouldn't want to see that happen. Uh, Mr. Sean Milgate. We, we are taking care of our city employees. Our city managers have agreed to not take a pay increase to compete with their wage scale across the board of the other cities that we compare with. To compete with their wage scale across the board of the other cities that we compare with, just to bring down the tax rate for you folks. They, oh, but I assure you they did, sir. So a lot of you have heard about Costco coming in here. But you also talk about how you moved here because it was the farmland. I have a small piece of farmland. That I maintain. I don't pay a lot for it because when I got it and under contract, I it was reasonable price at the time. So I'm grateful for that. Now, you see, a lot of people say they move here because of the farmland. Well, if Costco comes here, that's a lot of that's. Likely going to go away. It's a cycle. That's what happens. I have a friend who moved here from South Ogden. She lived just south of that Costco. She moved to Syracuse about 10 years ago because she wanted to be away from the busyness of it. And then she just told me she's excited for Costco. And I was like, wait a minute. You moved here because you didn't like the busyness of it, but now you want Costco here. So it builds back up to the busyness of it? So I I I don't, I don't. I for one, don't support it. I don't feel like this is something that Syracuse needs. Ms. Martinez, back to your question. Could you afford it? I'm going to get very personal with you folks right now. I make a total of $3,300 a month total in income. I can only afford to live in this city because I have a roommate that pays half of our living expenses in our house. I have one child, no car payment. We have two older cars, one I just paid $3,000 to replace the engine in. I work part time to trade because I, many of you know, I have horses. I work part time to trade labor for horse feet, so I don't have to pay for that. I got the property with a friend who covers half of that cost, so it breaks it down really low. So I understand. When you say you can't afford the property tax, I get it. But I like living here. And I like making sure that all of you have the appropriate. First responders that you need. I feel like we're doing something very. Not okay. We're not, we took eight positions or nine positions for firefighters out of the budget. Specifically to bring it down, to rely upon a grant that we may or may not get to fund the pay for those firefighters. So technically, right now, we don't even have a staffing for the fire department that we're building because we don't want to inconvenience. Our citizens with having to pay even more than what we've already have to have you pay. Because of the increase from the new fire department. So if we don't get that grant, we're kind of screwed. And we're putting ourselves in a very bad situation for that. And I feel like I'm the only one that sees that, but that's okay. That's okay. We've cut a lot of things out of this budget to make it as far down as possible. Brody needs help. This man. He's tired. He is. He works his ass off and I'm not, I'm not sorry for saying that. He does. He works night and day, all day long. He needs help. The lieutenant position, I understand the staffing for that. That'd be the only thing I'd be willing to negotiate on that. But for the Parks and Rec, they need that position too. They're overworked. We are trying to take care of our city employees so we don't once again lose them. So we don't once again have to fight and pay higher wages so we can get more employees to come here. So we can train them all over again because we're losing the ones we're not taking care of. And taking care of them means we don't overwork them also. When they're on a salary but still working 60, 70 hours a week, for me, I have a problem with that. A salary is usually based on a 40 hour to 50 hour wage scale unless you're construction and that's another story. I'm not trying to offend anybody. No, I'm not trying to insult the way anybody lives. I'm just explaining the way that I do. And hopefully maybe that you can relate to. I am the lowest income on this table. So I'm probably the most relatable ones. I made it a point to make sure that we talked about tax relief for our seniors. There are programs for that. If you call the city, we can try to help you guys find that. To make sure those things are helped, taken care to kind of alleviate it. But there's certain things that we just can't negotiate on. We can't negotiate on making sure someone's there to save your life. In an appropriate amount of time set by federal standards, I think in certain areas over there, we're three minutes over federal standards. Do you know what three minutes can do for someone having a heart attack, someone having needing an Epi shot, someone ODing and maybe that's. Touchy for some people, but it's true. You have to think of the reality of it. Think of your family member. If you live in that area where it takes eight minutes to get to you instead of five or less, which is federal standard. And your family member dies, you're going to wonder why it took them so long to get them. Because we didn't have coverage over there. Because Leyton City couldn't get to you in time. Is Leyton City going to be able to use our fire departments? Yes, but guess what? They pay for it. We have a contract. It's a inner city workings when other cities come to help us. It's aid, they pay us, we pay them, everybody's reimbursed, so it's all fair across the board. We spend a lot of time on this. We cut as much as we we can. I'm super irritated that we had to cut out LED crossing for the crossing guards. And people think that's, well, that's frivolous. Is it? Have you seen the way some of your family members drive through the crosswalks in the morning when they're crossing our children? It's not frivolous. It's something that keeps them safe. But we cut it to bring it down. And we've done that with a lot of things. And I know some of you feel like I'm just talking hot air and all that stuff. But like I said, from the lowest income on the table. I see the need for what this is. Do I like it? No, nobody likes taxes. Taxes suck through the government, right? I that's how I feel. I don't. Taxes suck, you know, I I moved to Syracuse to be able to. Be left alone, kill from my PTSD from being in a war torn country and just mind my own. And then I got bullied. So now I'm here talking with you folks. I don't want to pay those taxes either, but being in this seat and spending as much time as I do in all the different city departments. I can see today, I don't know whose truck this was, Public Works or Parks and Rec. I saw one of our trucks driving down the road with a lawnmower on it. The trailer was so small for this lawnmower, it was sitting on the wheel well. We can't afford to buy that lawnmower, a damn trailer that it fits on. What's going to happen now when that wheel well busts and that lawnmower comes off that trailer? And I know that's kind of a tangent, but that's the kind of things we're dealing with in our city. Our trucks aren't new. We have a dump truck that we're sending from one department to another because we can't afford to buy them a new one. So they're just getting a hand me down. Because we don't want to inflict that cost on you. All of this is public record. Everything we've talked about, you are more than welcome to go look up. I feel like my hot air has been enough.
Okay, so. I'm just going to say a couple of things that weren't mentioned because I do feel like a correction is or clarification on the answers there. Number one, your city elected officials, no one here is a full time employee of the city. But we all work full time jobs. And we do this. Yes, there's some compensation, but none of us are full time employees of the city.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Ms. Martinez. That was my answer to your question if I could, we could afford it or not. That's why I broke down my pay.
Okay, so. I have been overwhelmed with people telling me online to veto something. Your mayor has no power of veto. That is not a thing. I I will not be able to do that, even if you all wanted me to, but. I got that question enough times on the phone. I thought I better be clear that that is not a thing. The other thing that I wanted to mention, because it was a lot of you mentioned planning and nobody mentioned that here. We operate when we build budgets with five and 10 year plans in every department. So we have our roads planned for repairs five years ahead of time. So that we know where the money is going to, what we have to get in grants and apply for them. And see if we can divert any of that and get it there. So we're operating on a 10 year plan, actually on roads. Five year plan on park building where we have five years out and that money is all dedicated park money only. We have our vehicles are on 10 year plans for replacement. And that doesn't mean we replace them every 10 years, but it means that we plan 10 years ahead. For when we need a new replacement vehicle. So our vehicles. Yeah, there's some new ones, but they are not all new. They, in fact, we do have a lot that are. Have retired that were recently, we retired a. Brush truck that was 1983, I think. You know, we use them till they're dead. We but as you hire new people. You also want them to be able to do their job and that means that. There we do have to provide some new vehicles. Every new officer means one more car in the fleet. You know, those are things that have to happen. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that we do those planning. At this point. I have said my piece over a lot of meetings, so but I don't vote on this, so I'm going to wait your council to make a motion. And they vote on this and.
Mayor. Would it be okay if I addressed the council and the community?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute and I appreciate everybody's comments and your perspective. I I get. I think I get why, you know, you might feel the way you do about. What city employees are getting paid and. A couple of things I want to address. First of all, the slide with the cell phone service. Maybe I didn't communicate that slide very well. Nobody, I I'm pretty sure I did not say that, you know, anybody should give up their cell phone coverage or their internet coverage to pay their city taxes. We don't want that. And I'm pretty sure that's not what I said. The title of the slide was by way of comparison, so I was just comparing value, what you get for what you pay in each of those services. Nobody's asking to give up any of those. With full understanding that in some household budgets, those kinds of decisions are on the on the table and have to be, and I get that. But that wasn't the point of the slide and I wanted to clarify that. As far as the pay goes. Council members and mayor have mentioned, the numbers published do include the total cost, including required contributions to the state retirement system, medical benefits, all those things. And, you know, I think a couple of people mentioned we need to think of this like a business and. Gentleman in the red shirt, I'm sorry, I forgot. I didn't catch your name, but I agree with, I'm with you 1,000%. What do you bring to the table? And and that's what I believe I live by. You know, for example, when when you came through with the West Davis Corridor. I was a primary driver in doing some strategic land deals for the city. That netted the city a total of $5 million in in real estate value. That we are realizing here in the community. You know, my math would suggest that even if I did pay home $200,000. You know, that would take 25 years to be even. And by the way, that's not even why I get paid. That's in addition to why I get paid. I get paid to supervise. Eight departments with 220 employees. With a $50 million budget and I would put that up against any private enterprise with of the same size and what their chief operating officer gets paid. You know, so so those apples to apples comparisons, I I agree. You earn your keep. I'm on board with that. I feel like that's what I do here. And I feel like that's what all of our staff does here. You know, and I think, you know. And I and I'm not saying you have to like it and that sort of thing. I'm I'm grateful for what I get paid. I've 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 worked to do that. I have I have put in the time. And to invest in myself, just like everybody else has to do. I have to earn my keep, just like everybody else has to do for their jobs. And so, you know, I'm not ashamed of it. I know that, you know, maybe that doesn't sound good, but I feel like I've I've put in the time and sacrificed to earn what I earn. My presentation was not meant to say you need to like this tax increase. It's just putting out some information that of the value. The the city provides for the price. You don't have to like that. But I just wanted to clarify that, that I am dedicated to the city. The whole staff is. This is great staff. And, you know, by my math. It's an investment, you know, we provide more value than we get. That's an investment. You, the community has received, and I think it was Steve was his name, sir, in the back. You know, he mentioned maybe she'll be a city manager. Yeah, you know, if you like. You know, being criticized. For for bringing value to people on an order of 25 to one. For for what you get paid. Yeah, this is the right tool for you. If this assistant city manager position gets approved, I invite you to apply. You know, you might be good at it. I don't know. So I just wanted to to just address those comments that I agree, you know, earn your keep. And and that's what I strive to do. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brody, and we do appreciate what you do. It's a largely unseen job. People don't understand the long hours and the fires that are put out. That are not actual physical fires by by his.
Hope they might turn into it after a while. You don't handle them.
Okay, so at this point. We've heard from all your council members. You've all weighed in. I would need a motion for what you'd like to do with this.
So my motion, so. I think the reason we're at the point we're at with a 20% cap is some compromise on my part. I think we would have had a higher cap had I not done some compromising. The one piece that I didn't have when I made that compromise. Was the input of the citizens that I represent. So like I said, there's been so many people here that have expressed. What they want to see. We've received so many emails, phone calls, texts. If. I'll make I'll make a, I'll make a proposal now. I I don't know that there'll be agreeance, but. I propose that we approve the budget with the exception. Of the assistant city manager. That to be removed, the removal of the recreation coordinator and the removal of the police lieutenant position.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion made and a second. Is there anybody that wants to add any further discussion before we call the vote? Okay, I am going to call a roll call vote so that it's very clear. Just go down the line, Jennifer.
Nay.
Jordan.
Nay.
Paul.
Yay.
Julie.
Yay.
Brett.
Nay.
Sorry, clear?
No.
No, okay. All right, that motion fails, so that will not be our budget. So I need a replacement motion.
Can I make a substitute motion?
You can. Well, it would be a new motion.
Well, new motion. I would like to move that we accept the budget as advertised. Removing the police lieutenant only.
Do I have a second?
Moving forward with that.
With no second, that motion fails. Sorry. No. So now I need a motion still.
Well, we'll do the formality. I propose that we approve proposed resolution 924-29, setting the. Certified tax rate and adopting the final budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
Speak into your microphone better, Brett.
I apologize.
Is his mic on?
I don't know. Is your mic on?
Says it's on.
Okay, yeah, it is.
Got to get right in the.
You got to use your gen voice.
I propose that we approved, approve, proposed resolution 924-29. Setting the certified tax rate and adopting the final budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. As published.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. We'll go the other way this time, or Brett.
Yes.
Julie.
Nay.
Paul.
Nay.
Jordan.
Yes. I'm sort of mine.
Jordan, all right, Jen.
Hi.
Okay, that motion passes. Folks, you can't do that. At this point, we have a full meeting of other items that we normally would have in a business meeting. I am going to declare us in recess. Right recess.
They don't want to stand and watch us jump through hoops for Costco?
Well, we're taking a five minute recess. I agree.
Yeah, new information. I know, but I, I just, that's where I was at after, after getting feedback.
So I miss coffee, I love my French bread.
Oh, we had, we would have gone back to another.
If you would have guessed, would you think? So I, I can. There were only three options. You think it's gonna happen? Mike's. There was not another motion? Where was your motion?
Well, he's got a point. He didn't find one either, but neither did I, so.
I was welcome.
On the lower income peanut gallery, I'm fucking with it. You mean the police?
But he would have wanted us to send him out of here. So you didn't have a.
Okay, let me basically, Brody, we do need to go back. We've got lots to do tonight.
Can I go home just six minutes now?
There's an awful lot of things to do tonight. It would be that way on every. Okay. Folks, we need to, uh, move on with our meeting. Go on tonight. Well, we have to. Um, okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda of the business meeting.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our first item tonight is public comment. Uh, this is an opportunity, just like the public hearing, you can speak for three minutes and share your input with the council. Is there anyone here that would like to add public comment tonight? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Item number three, approval of minutes. Uh, we have minutes from July 9th and July 23rd. Um, is there anybody who has any changes to be made to those minutes? Without those, can I get a motion to approve?
Still moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next is a proposed resolution R24-30, reappointing Leanna Hamblin and appointing Jason Anderson, Daphne Lynch, and Mackenzie Buckway to the Syracuse Arts Council. Um, there has been some turnover. We have some people who served out their four-year term and are being replaced and one that would like to continue. So is there, uh, any, um, I guess, which is new motion, or unless somebody has any concern about any individuals?
I move that we approve proposed resolution R24-30, reappointing the stated individuals.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks for shortening it, Jordan.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes unanimously. Uh, we have a added item here, R23-33, amending the bylaws for the Syracuse City Arts Council. This is just one kind of emergency provision. Uh, the provisions of the Arts Council is that they have to rotate their depart, or the chair of the council. But because of their, all their experienced members, uh, rotating out and the other people who are experienced members not being available due to commitments with school, um, we have a situation where we need to allow someone to continue to be the president or the chair, or we're going to have somebody who has never been on the board before be chair. And so they asked me if I would bring this one to allow this provision to be a third year option. Does anybody have any further questions about that? It's just an unusual circumstance that they brought to my attention at the end of our meeting. Okay, so with that, can I get a, a motion?
I move that we approve proposed resolu- resolution R23-33, amending the bylaws of the Syracuse City Arts Council as outlined.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item is a public, the next item is a public hearing. Um, uh, public hearing is, uh, for resolution R24-31, providing the creation of a, the Gateway Public Infrastructure District. Uh, this is an independent district that authorizes, uh, and approves governing documents and appoints board of trustees for a infrastructure district that will help us build some public infrastructure that will be over on the Cook property off 3,000 and Antelope. Um, I think we're all familiar with this one, so I am going to go right to public hearing. Um, I open public hearing. Is there anyone who has any comments on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, can I get a motion?
Uh, I go, I move that we accept proposed resolution R24-31 for the creation of the Gateway Public Infrastructure District number one.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, this approves four to one and goes forward. Item number seven, proposed ordinance 24-18, adopting the Syracuse West Davis Gateway Community Reinvestment Area Project Area and Budget. Um, again, this has been something we've got, spent months, uh, working on, so I think you're all familiar with it. Is, if there's any discussion, bring it forward or I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept proposed ordinance 2024-18, adopting the Syracuse WDC Gateway Community Reinvestment Area Project Area Plan and Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that goes forward four to one. Proposed resolution R24, or 32, authorizing the execution of interlocal agreements with the Syracuse City Redevelopment Agency relating to the diversion of property tax uh, for the West David, or Syracuse West Davis Corridor Gateway Community Redevelopment Agency. Again, this, uh, is just our acceptance of what we have been getting acceptance from everybody else. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve proposed resolution R24-23.
Wait, 32?
32.
Oh, sorry, R24-32.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that goes forward four to one. And that brings us to our second public, uh, comment period, because our business items are done. So I will now open public comment. Is there anyone that has anything to bring forward to the council at this time? Okay, I will close public comment. I'm going to postpone, uh, the rest of this meeting for, so that we can recess into, uh, the RDA special meeting. We are in recess. Now I will call to order and adopt the agenda for the Syracuse City Special Redevelopment Agency meeting. Can I get an adoption of the agenda?
I'm moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we have a public hearing, proposed resolution RDA 24-03, resolution for the Board of Directors of the Syracuse City Redevelopment Agency approving the Syracuse, uh, West Davis Corridor Gateway Community Re- Development Area, or CRA, project area planning and budget. I declare us in public hearing. Is there anybody who has a comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So we would need a motion to create the Board of Directors, essentially the RDA Board.
I'm moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes four to one. Item number three, this is proposed interlocal agreements, uh, relating to, and we can do this all in one, uh, one motion, the diversion of property tax, uh, from Syracuse Gateway Redevelopment Agency to the PID. This is proposed resolution RDA 2404, RDA 2405, RDA 2406, RDA 2407, RDA 2408, and RDA 2409. All of these, uh, agencies have agreed to enter into a local, interlocal agreement with us for the, um, support of our CRA.
Mayor, may I make a brief correction?
Yes.
This isn't a resolution to send money from the RDA to the PID. This is a resolution to accept the interlocal agreements of all of those other districts.
Okay, I stand corrected. This is an interlocal agreement. To enter into this relationship with all these agencies. I will, for the record, state that, um, all but the, with the exception of the mosquito abatement district, voted unanimously in support of this. It's obviously a win for them as well. Uh, and the mosquito abatement district had, uh, one no vote and one abstention.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept resolutions RDA 24-04-05-06-07-08-09, as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, all those pass, um, with a vote of four to one. I will now declare us adjourned from our RDA meeting and reconvene in the Syracuse City Business Meeting, where I will offer the opportunity, though I'm hoping that you'll go be brief this, this meeting, for mayor and council announcements. Jennifer?
Um, the cops and dogs event was awesome. It was, uh, we did what, 700 hot dogs, 600? What did we do? It was well more than last year and it was a good time. We had way more cops and less firefighters. And I think that was a planned action, so that's cool. Uh, but besides that, everything else is going pretty well. Uh, I still want to compliment Chief Anderson when he gets back, but I'll wait till he gets back, say to his face.
Jordan? All right, um, it's been a good summer. We have been able to get a lot of projects done. Um, I know the rodent, um, around my neighborhood, which is uh, almost 15 years old, got replaced. So I, I, I do see us making progress on that. Want, kudos to the Public Works Department for facilitating that and we'll continue to make progress on that. And then, um, the next big thing I'm excited for is, just so everyone knows and you're planning for it, there are officially 79 days to Halloween. So, uh, we've got the pumpkin walk coming up. We've got the haunted house competitions. Um, I, I, I love fall and I love this time of the year in Syracuse.
Scary cues.
Scary cues.
Thank you.
Fall.
Um, I don't have any announcements. I email my summaries to you guys, but we did have the shortest meeting on record, I think, in a while. Last meeting, it was over in like 10 minutes.
This is the longest meeting we've ever had on the council.
No, it's not.
Okay, Julie?
Well, for us. No, I continue to attend my Communities That Care meetings. Nothing to report.
Okay, Brett?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, and I'm going to defer, uh, nothing at this time. So I will take a motion for us to adjourn into closed session. We have a business item that has to pertain to a land, uh, purchase agreement and that we are able to, uh, discuss in closed session so that we don't tell the public what our bidding parameters are.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bet you thought I was gonna say nay, huh?
No, I.
Okay, we will reconvene in the executive board room.